Voltauma County Board of Commissioners. Audience members, I want to start by asking you to please silence your electronic devices. I would also like to remind you that in addition to the audience in this room, we have people watching and listening online, so please consider your language and comments and testimony today. Today's meeting is a hybrid board meeting. Some presenters and guests will appear in person and some will appear virtually. For those presenting virtually, please mute your mic when not speaking. And when presenting, make sure to unmute your mic and turn on your camera. For folks who are joining us in person to provide public testimony or to present, please turn your mic on when you begin speaking so the green light is showing and off when you've completed your remarks so the red light is showing. For all presenters, please state your name for the record before speaking or responding to questions. We have no items on the consent agenda today, so we will move on to public testimony. Marina.
Opportunity for public comment on non-agenda matters. This is a time for the boards to hear public testimony, not for board deliberation. When it is your turn to speak, I'll call your name and unmute you or call you to the presenter's table. I'll set a timer for three minutes when you begin speaking and announce when your time is up, at which point please wrap up your sentence. Chair, we received five non-agenda verbal testimonies, and we also received one written testimony, which was shared with board members and staff. I'll call four people at a time. We have Injured and Pissed Off, Matt Scott, Sonya Weber, and Charles Johnson.
Pissed Off. P-I-S-S-E-D-O-F-F, one word. That's my last name. Injured and pissed off is my full name. I have a notice of transfer here that I received after speaking here last week. I guess I pissed somebody off. They have a transfer going back to my old apartment, 1212 Southwest Clay, apartment 217 on here. And I explained that I'd handed the keys to the board clerk. I don't know the exact day, but I did mention it two weeks later here that I'd given the board clerk the keys. And the county attorney was sitting to the left of her. I'm sure that she'd seen it, what was going on. I'd been in dispute with my landlord ever since I even moved to town. I guess I was crazy even to move to Portland. I had to get the Oregon legal aid to even allow them to accept my service animal because it weighed more than 25 pounds. They had HAP, the Housing Authority of Portland that owns the building, draw up papers saying that they could do such things as that, and they can't. And then, of course, I had seven dog attacks by the same dog in less than six years and suffered injuries from the seventh dog attack. No court responses, even with subpoenas to the previous managers for video of the incidences. And, of course, Animal Control was in charge of it. And you're in charge of them. And me getting injured by the lack of cooperation on your part is leading me to the being injured. And with my transfer here, I don't like being in a care facility anyways, but I refuse to pay. And one guy told me that he was paying $900 a day, and I asked him what, or he asked me what I was paying, and I told him nothing. I ain't paying to be injured and suffer.
Thank you.
I'll leave these papers.
Good morning.
Hello, my name is Sonya Weber. Thank you for this time to express my view on the recent DCJ audit. I work as a parole and probation officer for Voltauma County. I've held this position for nine years, and my educational background is in criminal justice. Since being hired, I've spent almost 1,000 hours training to do this job. I am curious what expertise in criminal justice the auditing team has to make the type of recommendations they have about this work. Most of my nine years has been spent in the domestic violence unit. This unit is the largest in the department. We supervise an average of around 645 JIIs convicted for domestic violence crimes, which range from assault, strangulation, coercion, stalking, and many others. About 95% of these JIIs have been convicted of violent crimes, and 100% of them carry victims. I was interviewed as a part of this audit, and after reading it, I am confused and can only come to the conclusion that there was an agenda and bias about the work I do before I was even talked to. This audit is misleading and has recklessly damaged the relationship we have with the community we strive to protect. It also has potentially increased the danger to our officers in the community. This audit fails to recognize that our job is defined by ORS, and we have a duty to perform that job for the courts and the parole board. We are governed by state legislature, policy, and standards. We already have guidelines that clearly list how much jail time can be given per seriousness of each violation and the definition of what poses a public safety risk. These cases are staffed with managers and approved or denied. We are not at will to just contain whomever we want. The amount of JIIs this department supervises compared to the amount of those that are actually being sanctioned to jail is a very low percentage. In May of this year, we supervise 4,266 JIIs. We sanctioned 144 of them, 77 of which were for new crimes or public safety. That is only 3% of the population that we supervise. The audit seems to care more about the harm being done to the JII than it does to this community and the victims of violence. When is the conversation ever going to change to be a victim-centered one? I have searched this audit for the word victim, and it comes up only when quoting the National Crime Victimization Network. Never does it mention the work we do to protect the community and victims of crime. In fact, when referencing a victim contact violation in the audit, it's stated as "contact with a person on a no-contact list" instead of "a crime victim with rights." Violations of contact orders are serious violations placing victims of domestic violence in fear. The truth is, most POs spend their time counseling clients through crisis, supporting them through change, building life skills, and searching for resources to help them. Our work is incredibly difficult. We experience empathy, fatigue, and secondary trauma, and none of us are getting rich doing this. We do it because we are passionate about this community, passionate about working with those that have made mistakes.
Finish your sentence.
Yeah. Passionate about this community, passionate about working with those that have made mistakes and want to do better, and the victims of crime that call us when they trust no one else. It's so unfortunate that this is the conversation today.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Matt Scott. I also am here today to express my concerns about the recent audit on the Department of Community Justice titled Jail Sanctions Are Worsening Inequities in Outcomes. In reviewing this report, there appear to be a multitude of problems stemming from confirmation bias, flawed methodology, and lack of understanding about the role of community corrections that led the authors to conclude that people of color or those with mental health issues experience, quote, "disproportionate harm as a result of sanctions," without providing any meaningful context about either the supervision histories of these individuals or underlying purpose of sanctions. In describing the roles and responsibilities of the Department of Community Justice, the authors highlight only those aspects related to providing resources and addressing, quote, "the effects of racism among those on supervision and in the community," end quote. The authors never mentioned victims or survivors of crime, nor, it seems, did they interview anyone who had been victimized or negatively impacted by the behavior of someone on supervision. Instead, these researchers, it seems, would prefer a client-focused system rather than one founded on the framework of restorative justice principles, in which the needs of the client are balanced with accountability and community safety. Throughout this audit, the authors described sanctions as not only ineffective at changing behavior, but also as causing harm by disrupting the lives of adults on supervision. They cite how sanctions negatively impact people's housing, employment, childcare, et cetera, but fail to recognize the problematic behavior that led to sanctions. It's important to understand, however, that sanctions are not just about changing behavior. They are a response to behavior. And a jail sanction can occur for a variety of reasons, including absconding supervision, failing to engage in treatment, weapon possession, contact with prohibited persons, or leaving the state without permission. By focusing only on, quote, "the harm caused to adults on supervision," the authors completely ignore the ways in which jail sanctions can protect victims and survivors, hold people accountable, or connect adults on supervision with resources they fail or refuse to engage with while in the community. Understood through this framework, jail sanctions can serve to prevent future harm or intervene on immediate harm. The authors of this study, in purposefully omitting critical data and focusing only on harm caused to adults on supervision, while simultaneously failing to mention victims of crime even once, advance the narrative that it is the criminal justice system, not individuals who commit crime, who is causing harm in our community. The simple fact that every person on supervision has either been found guilty or pleaded guilty to committing a crime or crimes that these adults have perpetrated harm upon others seems to have somehow escaped these authors. It is irresponsible studies such as these that create moral confusion about who we identify as victims in society and ultimately undermine public trust in institutions. Given the limited resources at the county level, it is disappointing that this study was conducted at all. Instead of spending taxpayer dollars to analyze the ways in which convicted criminals are being harmed by serving jail sanctions, the county could be investing these resources into providing services and support to actual victims of crime or any number of efforts that could have real tangible value for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Charles Johnson and Lightning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Bridge Green Simka, Charles Johnson. And unfortunately, all this festivity is somewhat dimmed by recent events, but thank you for coming to Pride. Well, short-circuit my regular plan and touch base on what will be coming up. The two testifiers before me spoke what we'll be looking at at R3. And unfortunately, something that us, the voters, your constituents have to face is, do elected officials hate accountability and responsibility? And there's more context than just the recent audit that they spoke about. We had huge hundreds of fatalities problems implementing Measure 110. Hopefully, we have some data that shows that we're doing better at serving addicts and providing a path to recovery. But hundreds of people are dead, and we have no idea what justice for those people looks like. Obviously, it includes an improved system. I'm not drowning in positive data about how we're better serving people suffering from addiction. That'd be the number-one path to justice I would like to see. So I hope that we'll soon, particularly from OHA, who has the heaviest responsibility, but I think it's a shared burden with the county, see improvement, our data that shows improvement in outcomes for people we've let be victimized, partially through their own issues and partially through our failure to block fentanyl distribution and other drugs. To stay Debbie Downer, or whatever, you know, a couple of months ago, if you'd asked me, oh, what do you know about, what do you know more personally and recently about deaths? I would have just said, eh, some white guys die prematurely. Dan Handelman, Bob Salinger. But the local, more recent deaths that are on my mind are Douglas Ivors and Damon Lamar Johnson. Douglas Ivors is the person who was shot at the Mack Stop between Ninth and Tenth on Yamhill. And, of course, when that happens, it's also the ruining of the life of the person who committed the homicide, murder, or whatever it turns out to be. And then we have people who get homicided, murdered, Damon Lamar Johnson. The PSEP began talking about that, or had a formal listening session about that last night. But he was in some kind of subsidized housing, we're sure. And so that, so you have, you all have a shared role in that. So I look forward to hearing your voices as we make sure that the police do not come in to people who have issues and kill them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Superhumanity. Basically, I want to have a clear understanding that while we're doing communication and you're writing down any notes on a notepad, that is considered a public record. And I want to be able to review any notes that you write down during any presentations, public communication. So I want to put that on the record, that it is considered a public record for the public to have access to. Again, when we're referring to the national, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to upset anybody over that. When we're referring to the national debt, and I always had an interest in the national debt clock in New York, Seymour Durst, the late Seymour Durst, I had conversations with him, actually on a book that he wrote. And as some people might know, he owned like six blocks in the Lloyd District. Anyway, I'd like to see a national debt clock put in Pioneer Town Square. I'd like to have that debt clock put up there so we can understand where the current debt is, somewhere around, what, 36, 37 trillion? And then we can understand exactly how much each individual is required to pay. We need to start having a clear understanding on how the government, the federal government, the Congress Budget Office has failed us. And the reality is, is that Ray Dalio, which I study quite a bit, is also predicting the United States will be bankrupt within five years. He owns one of the largest hedge funds, so if you want to understand somebody that's very knowledgeable about this, he would be somebody that is. He believes the same thing I do. We're going to go into bankruptcy, meaning all your pensions are going to be wiped out. Wiped out. In five years, is what he's saying. Now, the only way to turn that around is we have to offer a prize, a $1 trillion grant to anyone that can step forward and come forward with a plan that will abolish the national debt, take it down to zero. If you can do that, and your plan is put in, and it's effective, and it produces the results, you will receive a $1 trillion grant to use in any way you want. Now, people are saying, $1 trillion? Well, look, we're $37 trillion in debt, we're going to go bankrupt in five years. Let's bring out the super-intelligent geniuses out of their bedrooms, their basements, and figure this out. Figure this out. Silicon Valley, you have failed us. The tech industry has failed us. We have nothing but debt on our backs, and the United States will be bankrupt within five years. $1 trillion prize for the person that can turn that around.
Thank you.
I'm sure that is all the non-agenda public testimony for today. I'll move on to R1. R1, second reading of ordinance amending Voltauma County Code, Chapter 5, to implement ranked choice voting in county candidate elections.
May I have a motion? Love it. Commissioner Jones Dixon moves. Commissioner remember, second, with strong support from everyone. Approval of R1. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Vega Peterson and Commissioners. My name is Tim Scott. I'm the Director of Elections for Voltauma County.
My name is Leah Benson. I'm the Ranked Choice Voting Project Manager. Good morning.
And we're here today for the second reading of a proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 5 of the Voltauma County Code for the Implementation of Ranked Choice Voting for Voltauma County Candidates. Next slide. In November 2024, the Elections Division successfully administered the first ranked choice voting contest for the city of Portland, and we are now in the process of preparing for the implementation of RCV for county contests in November 2026. Next slide. Our first step in preparing for administering the county's first RCV contest is to update county code. Once the code is updated, we will move on to planning for voter education and updating election administration procedures. Next slide. In the drafting of the proposed ordinance, public engagement came from two key places, the Voltauma County Charter Review Committee and post-election RCV voter experience research after the November 2024 election. Next slide. The proposed ordinance was drafted with two main goals in mind. First, alignment with Voltauma County Home Rule Charter. And second, consistency with City of Portland Ranked Choice Voting Elections Code. Next slide. The code update will align the rules of RCV tabulation for, with our charter and the City of Portland Code for their single-winner contests, mayor, and auditor. Now, I'll hand things over to Leah for more of the details of the code update.
Thank you. Again, Leah Benson, Ranked Choice Voting Project Manager. As Tim stated, a key goal in the drafting of the ordinance was consistency between the city and county election codes. With the adoption of this ordinance, the county's RCV code would mirror the cities in the following ways. First, the same use of single-winner ranked choice voting. Second, the required certification of writing candidates. Third, would allow voters to continue to rank up to six candidates on their ballots. And fourth, it provides the same automatic voter intent interpretation for common voting errors, which are shown on the next slide. Actually, next slide after this one. Thank you. This slide is taken directly from voter education presentations from 2024. Aligning our code for skipped rankings, repeat rankings, and overvotes ensures that voter education messaging can be consistent. Next slide, please. In addition to the pieces that allow for consistency with the City of Portland, there are two elements that aim to improve the voter experience and efficiency of RCV election administration. First, a minimum of two filed candidates for RCV contests. It is not possible to rank candidates in relation to each other when there is only one candidate. Hence, it is common practice to set a minimum number of candidates needed for ranked choice voting to be used. Second, batch elimination, which I'll go into more depth on the next slide, please. Batch elimination allows for the simultaneous defeat of multiple candidates whose vote totals combined is less than the vote total of any other candidate, which makes their election impossible, since there is no way for them to ever gain enough votes to move forward in tabulation. It is common practice because it simplifies the results displays for voters and produces efficiencies in election administration. Batch elimination does not, however, change the voting experience and does not change the final results of an election. Let's look at a couple examples of this. Next slide, please. First, this is the final results report from the 2021 mayoral primary contest in New York City, where batch elimination occurred in Rounds 4 and Round 6 of tabulation. Batch elimination here simplified the results by condensing the rounds, but did not have any effect on the final outcome. Regardless of if batch elimination or one-by-one elimination had been used, the same candidate still would have won with the exact same number of votes. Next slide, please. Now, let's look at an example that's a little closer to home. In the Portland mayoral contest in November 2024, it took 20 rounds of counting before a candidate was elected. However, if batch elimination had been used, the exact same candidate would have been elected with the exact same number of votes, but it would have only taken seven rounds, simplifying the results report and, again, election administration procedures. And with that, that concludes a summary of our proposed updates to county code for the implementation of ranked choice voting. I'll pass things over to Tim now to open things up for questions.
Thanks, Leah. And we're here for questions, if you have any.
Give you the hard part. So, thank you so much, both of you. Marina, do we have any public testimony on this item?
No, sure.
Okay, we will go opening up to the questions from the board, and we'll start with Commissioner Singleton, since you were not here last week for the first one.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. I don't have questions for you all. I think you met with my team, and they were able to get through some of the questions I had last week, so I appreciate you making the time for that and the responsiveness. So I look forward to voting yes on this.
Thank you. Any questions from the center of the table?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Now, as I said at the last meeting, I really appreciate that you've extracted some lessons learned from the city's experience, and it's pretty straightforward. Actually, I do have one question for counsel. I'm assuming none of us have to declare conflict of interest.
Jenny.
Jenny, that's a question.
I don't see a conflict, but if you have additional information, I could evaluate it further? Just in that people would be voting for you as a candidate, would not create a conflict.
Thank you, Jenny. Commissioner Moore, any questions? All right, thank you. I don't have any questions either. Thank you for the thorough presentation and for all the work that's gone into this. And obviously, we wish you the best of luck as we ramp up and prepare for the first ranked choice voting for Voltauma County in '26. So thank you. Marina, can we have a vote? Marina, can we have a vote?
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brim Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones-Dixon?
Yes.
Chair Vega-Petersen?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you. We will now recess as the Multnomah County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Public Contract Review Board. Switch your hats, everyone.
R2, Resolution Approving Exemption Under ORS 279C 3352 From Design Bid Build Procurement Method and Approving An Alternative Procurement Method For The Walnut Park Redevelopment Project.
Thank you. May I have a motion? Commissioner Singleton moves. Commissioner Brim Edwards seconds. Approval of R2. So, I just have brief opening remarks. I'm really delighted to be here today, and I've been so glad to partner with Commissioner Singleton on this Walnut Park project. The action we're considering today is the next step in following the Walnut Park resolution that this board supported on June 26. That resolution recognized the historic significance of Walnut Park with Portland's Black community, affirmed the longstanding community-based restoration efforts, and supported the development of a proposal to redevelop Walnut Park in line with county priorities and community needs for future board consideration. As we'll hear from speakers today, and as the title of this item states, a traditional lowest bidder contracting approach doesn't give us the proposal that was called for in our previous board resolution. There's a different approach that's necessary to achieve the level of equity-informed work that we want and we're bringing to the table today for consideration. With that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Singleton for opening remarks before moving on to the presenters.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to appreciate the work, not just of this team, but the folks that I've been resisting jumping up to go give hugs to who are in our audience today and have done a ton of work in the community to get us to this point, and I know we'll continue to advocate for and engage in and be partners in this work. So, I really look forward to this next step. Thank you.
All right, good morning.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Hayden Miller. I am a Strategic Initiatives Manager in the COO's office, and I'm here today with my colleagues, Brian Smith and Garrett Pryor, to bring to you, as the chair said, a resolution approving an alternative contracting approach for the Walnut Park redevelopment project. I'll just give a quick overview of our presentation and a couple opening comments, and then I'm going to hand it off to my colleagues, and then I'll rejoin the presentation near the end. So, we want to make clear today, the action that we're asking you to take today is approving an alternative contracting approach, which will help us to tailor the RFP for this redevelopment project to meet the needs of what we've heard from you, our board, as well as the community in developing and preparing a proposal for the redevelopment of the Walnut Park property. We want to be clear, we're coming to the board very early in this process. There are still questions that are being finalized and answered as we initiate this long-term project to develop a proposal for redeveloping Walnut Park. We're coming to you early in part because of this need for the approval for an alternative contracting approach, but also really as an early demonstration of our commitment to be proactive in communicating with you, the board, as well as employees, community members, and all interested parties as we initiate this project. So, we are committed to coming to you frequently with updates. We're going to talk a little bit more about that in the presentation. And yeah, from there, I'll hand it off to my colleague Garrett. And next slide, please.
Thank you. Hi, Garrett Pryor, he/him pronouns, Chair Senior Policy Advisor on Infrastructure. And I'm here to set us up with just kind of location. Where are we talking about again? MLK and Corner of Killingsworth, close to 2 acres, and building built in 1951, and we've known now for a while, it's in need of major repair. As we saw in the June presentation, the historic significance that my wonderful co-speakers that were up here, Ray Leary, Gina Woolley spoke to, so I won't go back over that, but this is just the longstanding history. And I think what really struck me or took in that moment was when we had the picture of the Fred Meyer up, and we had the community speaker come and talk about walking through the front door. And that, just like as a history teacher, has the weight of that, just something I think was really poignant of the significance of this place. There's a cost of doing nothing from our latest facilities condition assessment, 5.2 million in needs to repair this facility, and that's just baseline needs in the next five years. And so, that's the importance also with this RFP in bringing in a development partner, somebody from the community with that knowledge, is to look at this site, but look at the properties around it as well. Because when, in a moment, I'll walk through the 2022 study, it was putting a lot on the county site itself, because it was trying to capture and do all the community needs there. Whereas if we bring a partner onboard through this RFP approach, we'll be able to look at this site in the context of the corner of this block where there is desire to redevelop not just the county site, but some of the surrounding areas. So, maybe even taking some of the pressure off trying to do all the things on the county site and pay for it there. Next slide. So, in 2022, why highlight some of the goals from that study? Because it's being used to inform the RFP that will be soon taking on, if y'all approve this today, is to, it really helped reaffirm what's been looked at and studied and thought about for this area for the last 20 years, going back to the King Center Development Plan in 2000. And so, it's to create a development focused on Black and BIPOC community equity, to continue engagement throughout the steps in the design of this process, to have a welcoming, celebratory, trauma-informed, community-welcoming space, to provide wealth-building and community-building opportunities, and design and program the site as a community health and service center. So, to continue the community's presence and resources that we have there. Let's go to the next slide. So, wealth building can mean a lot of different things or interpreted different ways. So, I wanted to show this just to talk to, wealth building isn't just lining the pockets of an outside developer in a private development that would come and swoop in on the site. It really is what the types of uses you see here on the screen, which are affordable housing or housing ownership possibly even, childcare centers, neighborhood indoor marketplaces like we've seen, we'll talk about the Rockwood Rising example and the work that's been done there in Gresham. Flexible community gathering spaces, and then that final list there are the ownership opportunities for small businesses, and that's one of the real successes we've heard about with Vanport Square, which is the block just south of where the county owns, is that those have been carved out in a condo arrangement to where your local business owners cannot just be in a space and pay rent, but to actually own it and develop not just that income, but wealth over generations. Let's go to the next slide. So, why partnership? Why is this approach needed? Like we've talked about, this has been looked at for decades, and in my experience, we're not alone in this. In other governments I've worked for in areas, especially ends up being in BIPOC communities, you have longstanding but very expensive county facilities that just kind of sit on the books, because that ability to gain income and pay for it on the county side alone, it kind of just leads us to analysis paralysis. And so, the idea of developing this partnership and being able to do what are the next couple bullet points there of, look at where can private money come in, or partnership, or how can we join with community to not only do what's best for the county in a fiscally prudent way, but also leverage upon what the community desires and tap into their assets and strengths and expertise and ingenuity? That's what we're trying to set up with this. So, I think the last bullet point there, I just want to emphasize around a proof of concept, is that we, you know, as the county, under Chair Vega-Petersen, she's charged me with helping to figure out and help coordinate our approach for economic development in responding to the times that we are. And I think this is a great double down on not waiting for somebody from the outside to come in, but really looking at where are the strengths we have in our community today, and how can we work in partnership to build with them to grow the economy and the revitalization we want to see. Next slide. So, I'll talk a little bit here, and then I want to welcome in Brian, who's our expert on procurement. But this specific approach is new for the county, but we have been in this business before with multi-stage RFP contracts, land disposition that goes to nonprofit housing providers. We've been a lease or a leasee, various types of fiscal and management structures. So, maybe this flavor of ice cream, we haven't done before, but we're in the ice cream business, so I think we can put our talents together. Thank you for, Salt and Salt and Shop, possibly. We won't name drop here, I don't want to brand. But, and also, we've been looking around the community. We've seen what OMSI has done with their equity-specific and focused work on the Northwest Native Chamber with the tribal nations work there, their RFP from Commissioner Jones-Dixon, and what's happened out in East County with Rockwood Center and working with RKM Development to do that work. And Prosper Portland with the Williams and Russell site, which is just, if you get into that RFP, it's a real balance of a bunch of different players, but it's all different parts of government, Housing Bureau, others focusing in and being specific about this RFP and equity approach. And Brian, do you want to say a minute?
Good morning, Board. Brian Smith, I use he/him pronouns, and I'm the county's purchasing manager. I think one of the things about this particular approach that is before you today is, the county is very expert in terms of going out and doing RFPs for construction manager at risk and other types of alternative delivery projects. And the thing that's really unique about this approach is we're coming to you a little earlier than we have historically. And I think that's really to be able to look at options around, more options for delivery as well as financing for this particular project. So, that's really the new thing that's different about this particular project and approach that's before you today. So, but I'm very confident that we will be able to, we're working on the RFP right now to be able to get a developer onboard who will work with us and be able to balance the fiscal responsibility with the equity concerns and the historical context that we're looking to incorporate into this project.
Excellent. And now, Hayden?
Back to me. Next slide, please. So, today, we are really at the very start of this process. That star on the furthest left, I like to informally call it Stage Zero, which is the kickoff of the 12 to 18-month process for developing the proposal for this redevelopment project. The next engagement opportunity that we know we will be coming back to you at is when we have completed that proposal development work, are ready to brief you and the community on it, receive your input, and should you approve, move forward into the design stage for that. We would then have another stage gate at the end of the design, at which point we would come back to the board for approval to move forward into the next stage, which would be construction, and then further down the line, and to be clear, a lot of these are details that we are going to be working out through this proposal development stage. We would eventually move into a phase of operations and ongoing maintenance of the final development product that comes out of this process. As Brian and Garrett said, we have a history of doing multi-stage contracts like this. We have a really fantastic team in DCM, DCA, Central Procurement, really across the county that has a lot of experience doing very complex development projects. Just a few examples, including our multi-multi-million library capital bond program, the courthouse and the Gladys McCoy construction, just a few. And we're looking at the work that other partners in our community have done, such as Prosper Portland, such as OMSI, really learning lessons from those, incorporating them, and moving forward in a spirit of transparency and community engagement. This approach is also intended to give us multiple on and off ramps and opportunities and checkpoints to decide if and how we will move forward. And at the end of the day, those are really going to be decisions in your hands, especially until we get into those really further down-the-line steps, where we understand what community and our development plan is looking like. The board is going to have multiple opportunities over the coming months and really years, as this is a long-term project, to be briefed on, weigh in, and ultimately approve our transition between project phases and any major actions that would impact county services. We are also planning to offer written quarterly updates to the board as well as to the community, so that, you know, some of those may be, we're still in our design phase right now, but we'll be sure to give you clear updates on exactly what we're doing on a quarterly basis, and we'll be prepared to come and brief you and your staff individually or at the board whenever necessary. We also just want to call out that what we have heard from community members in Walnut Park and the north and northeast Portland area about the importance of a multi-stage process because of past challenges and harm that's been done when the county and other community entities have brought community in for that Phase 1 of planning and design and visioning, and really centered community and asked them to spend their time and their money on that work, but then there has not been a clear outcome, resolution, or an opportunity for the desires of the community to be realized through a conclusive process. So, this multi-stage process is really intended to reflect the lessons that we've learned from previous efforts and be responsive to what we've heard from community about them understanding very clearly, here's what we're asking of you when, and here's how that's going to flow into the next stage of this process. Next slide, please. So, just, I would actually, this is a little typo, it should really actually say Phase Zero Proposal Development, that's where we're at right now, though I guess a zero, you could debate, sorry, I could get philosophical there. Our plan is to, under this phase, identify the potential funding and financing plan and really understand both the short, medium, and long-term impacts to community partners, county services, employees, and the roles that will be playing, the role of the county in this process, the role of our development partner, the role of community. We're also going to be sure to incorporate the work that's being done around long-term planning and the needs of onsite county programs. I'll talk a little bit more about what we're already doing to partner particularly with the Health Department, but we also have DCHS and Homeless Services Department services located at Walnut Park right now. We're working very closely with those departments, and will be with their advisory bodies to keep them in the loop and engage them to the greatest extent possible in this work. We're also going to be working to understand what the various options are around the management of the site and development and the ownership. Some of the, we'll be bringing to the board an analysis of the trade-offs between owning the site and leasing it, for example. Those are the types of questions we're really going to be digging into and reporting out to the board, not only our recommendations, but also the process by which we went, we thought through these questions and how we came to our recommendations. And then finally, we'll be preparing a plan to engage with the people being served and working in the building and onsite, as well as the county advisory boards for impacted services. I know we heard, we were very grateful to hear from the Chair of the Community Health Center Board at our last meeting on June 26 about the importance of involving that body, as well as all of our departmental advisory bodies and stakeholders, to ensure that they are brought along with us and really are part of this work as we're developing this proposal. We have informed the CHCB, the Community Health Center Board, of this board action we're taking today, and requested an opportunity to visit one of their upcoming meetings to provide them a more thorough briefing on this process, the intent and the outcomes that we expect. And we are also working to flesh out and understand exactly how we can actually involve the CHCB, but also other advisory bodies and key partners and stakeholders at the earliest, from the earliest stage possible of this project, and really in as many ways as we can to ensure that their voices and experiences are centered. We also have heard from county employees at the clinic located at Walnut Park about the need to set real expectations, circle back, be transparent and communicative and responsive with employees when we're doing this work. Work that's been done in the past has at times left hard feelings as staff were engaged, but then they never really heard back and actually understood, like what we heard from community as well, how did my work, my time, my effort, my thoughts, and my input, how did that get taken and move forward? What came out of it? So, we understand that. That's something we've been talking with the Health Department a lot about as well, and we're committed to clear communication with the staff, with our service recipients, our community members, and all of our partners as we move forward through this work. Next slide, please.
So, the resolution you have before you today will authorize an alternative contracting approach that is not a low-bid approach. We're currently working on a draft of the RFP, and the intent is to release it as soon as it's done. But it's important that the board actually approve this before it go out. So, the alternative contracting approach is really needed to understand some of the options that might be available around partnership and to inform that the future Phase 1, 2, and 3 development stages that are laid out in the findings. The findings are attached to the board agenda, and they were published in the Business Tribune to meet the 14-day statutory requirement prior to this public hearing. to meet the 14-day statutory requirement prior to this public hearing. And so that's what you have in front of you today.
Next slide, please. This is our last slide, I believe. So just to give you an idea of what our next steps look for, as Brian said, we are actively drafting the RFP right now with the intent of launching that later this summer into early fall, you know, hoping in the next few weeks, month at the latest, with the selection of a development partner occurring this fall. The proposal development in part, through partnership with the county and the development partner and, and through community and stakeholder engagement will take place between the fall of 2025 and into 2026. As we've said, we expect that to be a 12 to 18 month process. And then we plan to not only come to the board with updates at the conclusion of each stage, but also we will be following all required steps for any major project development and potential land transfer. So as I said earlier, we will also be providing you with written quarterly updates. Those will be made public as well so that the community can understand exactly where we're at in the, the work of this. We're going to be including the viewpoints of our key stakeholders from this earliest stage and throughout it, and we're looking for really to maximize the opportunities to include those voices. And then lastly, I'll say, just to kind of recap where we're at on the financials, to date and for this fiscal year, the board has approved $150,000 for this project. That is what will fund the initial stage, what I've been calling in this presentation stage zero. If there are any major actions or investments or possible land dispositions, really any major action that would require the board to be briefed and approved, we will come back before you in full accordance with county policies and procedures. Just want to be really clear that what you're approving today does not in any way usurp or forego any of those processes. It's really about giving us the authority to launch this different style of an RFP. So with that, we're really grateful for your, the opportunity to come before you today, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Brian, Hayden, and Garrett, for all the work on this. And I know there's a lot of folks on the team who are getting us to this point, so just appreciate the work. We do have several people signed up for public testimony on this item, including a couple of virtual folks. So we will, Marina will do public testimony, and then we'll go to the board for any questions or comments.
Virtually, we have Jesse Beeson. And then I also checked for Ailei Halova. Is this person available?
She's in person.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you. So I'm also going to call up Ailei Halova, Stephen Green, Charles Johnson, and Lightning. Jesse, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you, Marina. Chair Vega Peterson, Commissioners, good morning. My name is Jesse Beeson. I'm sorry I couldn't be with you all in person. I want to express my support for today's resolution by starting with a quick story about my 11-year-old niece Ella. Last month, Ella took a school trip to Washington DC, which included a tour of Monticello, Thomas Jefferson's former plantation. On that tour, she turned to the tour guide and said, "So Sally Hemings was 16 when she had her first child by him? So you're telling me Thomas Jefferson was a pedophile?" Now, I share this mostly to brag on my smart 11-year-old niece, but also to say that if my fifth-grade niece can hold both truths, that Thomas Jefferson inspired a nation to dream of freedom while he kept Sally Hemings and 600 others in bondage, then we can definitely hold multiple truths in moving this project forward. We can hold that while this nation's history is always with us, no matter what books we ban, that the future is not yet written, that what we do today is part of writing that future together. We can hold the truth that within my parents' lifetime, our county, its cities, and private real estate interests colluded to keep equal opportunity for black folks, drawing red lines on maps to deny health and wealth. And we can hold the truth that instead of colluding, governments can collaborate with community interests to repair, redress, and build a more inclusive corner in a neighborhood that used to be more black, and it can be again. And we can hold the two truths that Toni Morrison spoke of when she said, "It's not possible to constantly hone on the crisis. You have to have the love, and you have to have the magic that is also life." As Garrett said, it isn't going to be easy, and it will require building new muscles, both inside and outside of our government. But I believe what the county can do at Walnut Park in partnership with the community can center love and can make magic at a critical intersection of history and at a time when many governments are capitulating, defaulting on what Dr. King called "the promissory note to which every American was supposed to fall heir." It is said that in the early drafts of the Declaration of Independence, Thomas Jefferson wrote that "among the truths us Americans hold, as self-evident, are life, liberty, and property, not the pursuit of happiness, property." Let's remember, it was also Thomas Jefferson who believed that our nation's constitution could only survive if it were regularly amended to reflect changes in society. In other words, our democracy, whether it's our public policies, practices, or spending, needs regular rebuilding, reinvention, and rebirth. I agree with Jefferson on that. So in our pursuit of happiness for every one of our residents, in our pursuit of the renaissance of this property for both county employees and those they serve, it is both inspiring and fitting that the county is committed to rewriting the playbook, making new flavors of ice cream, and, and doing all of this in partnership with the very people to whom our promissory note is due. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. And just hit the button, so there you go.
Good morning, Chair Peterson, Vice Chair Brim Edwards, Commissioners. My name is Anielei Halova, and I am the founder and CEO of Andre and Equity and Social Responsibility Real Estate Development Company. I'm here to voice my strong support for approving the alternative development delivery process for this important project. Public-private partnerships, when rooted in equity and shared purpose, are far more dynamic and responsive than traditional public development approaches. They create space for innovation, community-engaged leadership, and long-term impacts in ways that standard procurement processes often don't. We've seen firsthand with the Williams and Russell project, a public-private partnership between the city of Portland, Prosper Portland, and Legacy, which donated the land. That project includes a community-serving business hub, 20 affordable for-sale townhomes, 85 affordable apartments, and a central plaza that tells the history of the site and celebrates the Black community. This project is being built on a block that was cleared through eminent domain during the manual relocation in the 1970s. My firm, Andre, is serving as the land developer and is leading two of the three development projects on that site. We break ground in September on the homeownership component. This partnership has produced a powerful vision for revitalization while centering community values and addressing a legacy of displacement. It shows what's possible when government and community share leadership and work collaboratively to build projects. What's on the table for approval today is not just a technical shift, it's an opportunity to realign how we do development. This approach creates an opportunity to build in real community benefit from the ground up, whether that's wealth building in terms of community health and well-being, culturally-supported services, or long-term affordability. And let's be honest, with the continued decline of federal investment in the Black communities and communities of color, we cannot rely on the same methods to achieve our needs. We must shape the tools and delivery models that reflect our values and given, give us our agency over how our local neighborhoods grow. Approving this shift moves in that direction. I urge you to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Bridge Crane, Charles Simka Johnson. And I think the vote here is, you know, pretty much a no-brainer, and what's actually more important to talk about is what additional obligations and burdens do you need to be mindful of when you take on this vote? Whether it's alternative or went through conventional processing, but the thing is to think about not just this parcel, as, you know, has already been brought up, this neighborhood, and to have actual plan, and actually more than one plan because things change in scale. So, you know, as this property sits right now at Killingsworth in MLK, directly across the street, US Bank, across the other street, the Boys and Girls Club, and whoo, the police and the post office on the east side. And even though this isn't a big mega-developer project that talks about spanning those streets, we want to think about the quality of life for people in those neighborhoods. That neighborhood, even though it's had some downside, you know, I've mentioned before that US Bank is holding on across the street, not even maybe a block or two up, Wells Fargo is there. Hopefully, that Safeway is vibrant and thriving, and we won't have any problem with food supply in that neighborhood, although just a half block down, I think there's a Natural Grocers or something at that, behind there. So but what does a holistic, good quality of life look like there? I got Commissioner Moore to nod when I, about some credit union CEOs making $700,000. But of course, I left out the 2.39 million that other credit union CEOs sometimes make in the past five years. And what, for those people, is it realistic for only US Bank and Wells Fargo to be in those neighborhoods? When we look at the growth not too far from the project that's finally happening across the street from the Urban League, we're reminded of displacement. I'm going to talk about where there's United Credit Union, one block from the On Point Credit Union, which is adjacent to the Chase Bank and the New Seasons Market. And does constructive growth for this neighborhood in Walnut Park maybe mean one of our local credit unions with their three-quarter million dollar or $2 million CEO should be in that branch? So that people are, sometimes people think US Bank or Wells Fargo can be a little bit predatory. Regardless of that, those are partners that can step up. And when we vision this neighborhood, we really don't know what's happening in Portland. Is there going to be a resumption of growth? Is population going to be kind of static? We do know that we need to house thousands and thousands of homeless people and create viable solutions for people who cannot pay market rents. And, you know, some of the visioning we've had for this site shows some buildings, but I don't know if it's gotten down to the nitty-gritty of how many people can pay market rent there? How do we subsidize other people? So vote yes on this, but, you know, big project and lots of more work to go into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Stephen Green. Portland native, I've lived in Woodlawn neighborhood for the last three decades. I think it's important to note, I'm a recovering banker and a recovering city employee. I've worked on hundreds of real estate transactions in inner north and northeast. And upon coming here this morning, I had prepared notes like everyone else, but I had to take pause in, in going by the site and then seeing the, the site where natural, nature, Natural Grocers is. I, I think the most important reason for why this is important and why you should approve this today is, well, I think the biggest thing we learned from the Trader Joe's situation was the difference between relationships and outreach. And I think over the years, working for the city, we did a lot of outreach, and I think outreach is something you do to someone, a relationship is something you do with someone. And the most expensive thing in that transaction was the lack of relationships that we had in community at the city level at that point in time. We, we went with the billionaire who had the, the money and all the street cred, and we didn't invest the time in cultivating the relationships with the people that lived in that community and were going to be impacted the most. And so as you move forward with this decision, I think about this is, this is an opportunity to go and be thinking about how to build relationships instead of outreach. I remember when I was doing my interview to, to be working at Prosper Portland, and I asked what it was like to work there. I was coming over from banking, and one of their Black employees said, "We're always thinking about fixing to get ready to do something, but never quite doing it." This is your chance to start doing it. The opportunity is now. We've got some amazing partners. Oregon is home to more than 8,200 Black-owned businesses, more than half of those reside in Multnomah County. They're growing, they're drone companies, they're coffee businesses, they're, you know, recovering venture capitalists like myself, all looking to make this city a little bit better. So look forward to seeing you all approve this. Thank you for the time.
Thank you all so much. Was that all the public testimony, Marina?
We have Lightning.
I represent Lightning Superhumanity X. One of the things, I wasn't quite clear, and maybe somebody can state the correct answer. Is this currently owned by a municipality or is this currently privately owned? And I, I want to have a clarity on that when I've heard some people speaking. Now, one of the things that I want to make very clear on this is that when we're talking the affordable housing aspect possibly on this project, what I see a lot of times in the communities is that what we end up doing is, say, developing a 100-unit building or a 50-unit building, and then we have the nonprofit come in and participate, and they end up managing and owning the property. And what I want to see on this property is that if we're going to use public money to fund the development, which, hearing the developers here, some of the developers, I would like to see the property actually be given to the public as far as the individual units. And the way we do that is that, you know, if we develop a 100-unit apartment building, we just do a condo conversion, and then each unit can be given to the individuals, to the 100 people. And I think on this project, it would really send a statement that we do want people to have equity. We do want people to have ownership. And we are going to give you these units from Multnomah County for a lot of things that happened in the past that were shocking to me, on people removed off their properties and out of their housing and not allowed to live in certain areas. And I think Multnomah County, with the history of dating back to the Klan and unspeakable things that took place, it's not inappropriate for the county to say, "We will give you these units. We will give you this equity. And I know that the public will approve that are going to fund these projects." So don't just build these and then hand them to a nonprofit and let them own it. Build the units and give the units to the people that deserve the units, deserve the equity handed to them, deserve it. That is what I want to see happen on this project. That is what I want to see happen on this project, and I'm hoping there's other community members that will agree with me on that.
Thank you. All right, I'll ask you three to come back up to the dais, and we will go to the board for any questions or comments. We'll start with Commissioner Brim Edwards.
Thank you, and I want to just share my appreciation to the community, Commissioner Singleton and Commissioner Beeson, who sort of originally lit the flame, and I'd forgotten how much I love his history lessons, which he, which he always brought into the commission meetings when he was serving here. And I hate, after all that, to like dive into some more technical questions, because I'm, I'm interested in just probing a little bit. I know, I know from the presentation that there's, things will be coming back at different stages, but I wanted to probe what the possibilities in the RFP of sort of like, what's, what's in, what would be in consideration using this contracting method and what's out? And then, and I'm going to be asking these questions, and like, how do we optimize the county's capital resources? So currently, do we own all of our health centers? And I don't, no, this might be also a question for the DCA team. I'm just curious, that and, or are some of them leased? And then currently, as I understand, we have about 91,000 square feet at Walnut Park of County presence, and is that the same that's contemplated going forward? Or is that an open question?
Yeah, we can start taking those piece by piece. Let's start with Dan or Rachel Deal, when it come up. We did, we pulled the numbers on, we do have some leased rented spaces for health, but I'll have Dan speak to that.
Hello, good morning. Chair Vega Peterson and Commissioners, Dan Salco, Division Director for Facilities and Property Management. Outside of the school-based health clinics, we have two clinics that are in leased spaces. Billy Odegaard in Old Town, which has a short-term lease that could continue to be renewed. Billy Odegaard in Old Town, which has a short-term lease that could continue to be renewed. And then also the Fern Hill Clinic, which just recently opened, which is a more long-term lease, initial term is 10 years, and it has multiple five-year extensions after that. And the second question about the square footage, that number sounds about right, but we'll have to get back to you with the exact square footage as far as what's contemplated. That will be determined going forward. In the past studies, about 10% to 20% more space was contemplated. It was somewhere around $100,000. And when we share the square footage, we will also share what was contemplated in those past studies at least.
Okay.
And do you need Hayden or Brian to give you kind of a high overview of what RFP approach, what might be in?
Just some, maybe I may ask a couple of questions and then maybe you can leave it all together. And this is a question maybe for, maybe DCA still again, is this, is, since this is a 1951 structure, is this contemplated sort of a modernization in our overarching, long-range facilities plan?
Currently, there's nothing in the near-term capital plan regarding its redevelopment, but in our long-term ideas, it's listed as a potential major redevelopment or major renovation and expansion. And we've done studies in the past that showed those various options. We have work planned out in our capital improvement plan, some of the smaller stuff, but as far as a large development plan, there's nothing scheduled for the next just couple of years, but it is on the long-term ideas list.
Great. I have some additional questions, but I also want to just reemphasize that I really think the county needs to be looking at all our, all our long-term capital needs, so we're not just doing these small projects, but we have some big projects that I think we really need to sequence out and look at how we create capital stacks for them. If we were to, just a clarification, we can't use bonds for a leased facility, but we can for owned facilities, correct?
Maybe an.
This is maybe an Eric question.
We phone a friend.
For the record, Eric Gardano, Chief Financial Officer. And for leased facilities, we could not issue tax-exempt bonds to fund a leased facility development, but there are options if the county were to potentially issue a taxable issuance, but it depends on what we're actually going to do, and obviously, with taxable financing, it tends to be more expensive when you look at that alternative.
As long as you're up here, another, just a click down. So I was looking through the 2022 report, just about sort of the overall development where it has potentially the county presence very integrated into the larger project. And I'm wondering, again, sort of thinking how you optimize at the most cost-effective way, county dollars, could we, could there be contemplated through a future contracting process that, and bonding process, that you condoize the county portion so that actually, even in a larger development, you, the county still owns that piece and could use bonds for the, for the financing? Is otherwise the lease, if we lease something, that would come out of general fund?
Yeah, correct. I think the way you just laid it out, if the county were to hold, I mean, like, the team has shared is, we're going through that process to kind of figure out development options, but if one of those options was where the county retains some ownership or portions of it, we could essentially finance against that, those owned assets.
So even integrated into, because the plans I saw, I mean, it was great, it was all the, all the things that you would want to have on that site, but you could still have sort of county ownership and paying for the county piece and paying for the capital piece. And I'm assuming also, my experience with bonds, you could also pay for the relocation expenses, which if you weren't bonding, that would be a.
Correct.
General fund expenditure.
Yep, correct.
Great, thank you. That's, and I'm assuming also as part of this, and I'm supportive of this, so the question's not asking, because in opposition, but the, there's assumption that potentially the non-county portions of operation or facility would, the ownership would be transferred, and that's also allowed under the county rules and could be contemplated as part of this RFP? I'm not sure.
Yeah, Commissioner, I'll, I'll start, and then you can add there, but I think that's what this RFP is getting us to, those bookends of the process of what would be a more publicly held, maintained, kind of maybe even ownership more majority-wise of the site, and then a more, kind of the other end of spectrum of that privatization. And we do that, we look through those different options, the trade-offs in those, the costs, and we use that, like you were kind of hinting at there, to then come back up and inform how we do next year's budget and that capital decision as a part of that strategy. But the RFP is needed to get, help us get a partner on board to delve into those different scenarios and kind of take what was done in 2022, but more truth-check that in real time of like, what would the private market bear, and then what are those trade-offs between, you know, public ownership or not?
Yeah, and just to go back to sort of the optimizing the county's capital resources, when I was looking at the 2020 report, it had the estimated development cost for the county portion at $172 million. And I'm assuming that is sort of somewhat for the replacement of whatever the current services that are there and potentially this added expenditure. And that's without cost escalation or the relocation, which is, this is why I'm looking at sort of like, how do, how does it fit into our long-term financing? Because that's a, that's a big nut. So then the last, two more last questions. And I think you alluded to this in the presentation, but the county hasn't used an alternative. It's contemplated, contemplated it during the, for the courthouse and then decided not to. So this, this would be the first time the county had, if it proceeded something like this, the first time it's done something.
Yeah.
I guess at this scale?
Yeah, for the, for the downtown courthouse replacement, we looked at doing a public-private partnership and actually started down that pathway. And then when it came to the value-for-money calculation part of that process, it was determined that that project didn't pencil out that way. And so we went with a traditional CMGC or contractor-risk delivery method for that one.
There was a slide that had stars on it that had like action steps. Just to clarify, those are commission action steps, not just county action steps. So after phase one and phase two, those, there would be specific commission actions versus, flipping to the sort of administrative side of the county, is that correct? Yes, thank you.
Definitively yes for step one. These other steps, I think in step one, if there are kind of a bundling, sometimes in these public-private partnerships, you'll bundle design and construction to get a kind of a lower price to there, but all that'll be laid out in the step one. So when we, you come back fall of 2026, you'll have a clear runway path of all the future checkpoints in it, because you'll need to approve a FAC 1. If there's any kind of land disposition or transfer, you'll have to go through that process. So you'll get a really robust, like, understanding at step one of all those future checkpoints and input pieces throughout. Yeah, the process.
So you're saying one and two might be smooshed together?
Two and three might be, yeah, one and two might be smooshed together, yeah.
And then there'd be a three?
And then three would help, yeah, be determined if, if that's the, in the setup of the contract.
And obviously, if we did bonding or something like that, that would also be a board action. Great. And then my last question, in the RFP, it lists as one of the requirements, having expertise in Portland, specifically in the historic and current nature of Walnut Park and the Albina community. How many potential developers are we anticipating have that expertise?
I don't think that's a question we can answer.
I think, yeah, I think one of the things, as we've been putting together things like, for example, the findings and trying to figure out who's out there, we certainly know of some that are available, but looking also at some of the other projects that other public agencies in the areas have done that we're kind of taking lessons learned from, there appear to be enough out there to make a competitive environment, and so that's kind of what we're going for. And as we're crafting the, the RFP document itself, one of the strategies is certainly, I as the purchasing manager am, and the discussions we have on that, is trying to keep that as open and competitive as possible, because we certainly want everybody who is, would be qualified for this to take a good, hard look at it and, and really give us their best proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner John Dixon.
Great question. Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation, and guests, thank you for being here this afternoon and your participation in the, in the process. Just have, just two questions. One, growing up in that neighborhood, excited to see this, and I appreciate the creativity. And as someone that has participated in the Rockwood Rising Project, the Rockwood Market Hall Project, they produced me as a, as a city councilor now, as a county commissioner. So to Mr. Green's, what's that?
We will not pull that again.
Yeah, please, please, please don't. And to Mr. Green's, Stevens' point, as far as the difference between outreach and relationships, I really appreciate just the process that we're going through as of now, so we're, we're trailblazers. I just want to make sure that the health clinics are going to participate in the process and in the project, that's one of the things that they, they mentioned. Is that, did I hear that right?
Yes, yes. We, we are still finalizing the RFP, which will include like the, the evaluation process. So we're still figuring out some of those specific details, but yes, and that's why we're hoping to visit the health, the community health center board soon to start that discussion about how they would like to participate as well. We don't just want to tell them, we want to ask them and work collaboratively with them.
Perfect. And lastly, I just really appreciate just the transparency and then also engaging the board throughout the whole process and to a lot of the comments that Commissioner Brim Edwards made, it sounds like a lot of those things will be worked out through the process over the next 12 to 18 months. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Looking forward to doing work with you.
Thank you. Commissioner Moyer.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, and I appreciate the conversations we've had thus far, they were very helpful. When you talk about bringing a developer on board in these early stages, the term developer can mean a lot of things. I'm wanting a little bit of clarity of, is that the developer who's potentially going to have a financial interest in the outcome, or is that a developer who is working with us and will help bring potential investors in? I kind of want to understand the financial relationship of this early phase.
So the, I'll take a stab at that, and then I might turn to my, my colleagues. I would say we're using the term developer very broadly, and another term we're using kind of interchangeably, especially in our conversations, is partner. I think that's another way to really think about this, is it's about bringing on someone who has the experience in the knowledge of the, of the community and the historic context, the experience with complex funding stacks, the experience managing construction projects. I do not want to get ahead of what we may, what may come out of this process in terms of whether or not that partner, that development partner, will be the same entity that ends up owning the site and operating it. Those are the questions that we're going to be delving into. The action that the RFP we're putting forward will do is contract using the funds given to us by the board for this fiscal year to initiate that first phase of visioning, and then subsequent actions, including the development of additional contracts, or as Garrett was saying earlier, in terms of anything with a land transfer, anything like that, would have subsequent board conversations and action take place. So I guess the, the short version of that answer is, it's a broad term right now, and we, I think there's, I can see several different pathways that that could end up in. Does that answer your question?
No. Yes and no. It makes me significantly less comfortable than if I understood going in what the financial motivation, which is not wrong. I come from a family of developers, so I don't have anything against developers, but I want to understand when we go forward and we choose a partner in this, what is their perspective in it? And it changes depending on their financial stake at it. And I think it changes our need to be clear going in of what our desires are for the property. I share some of what my fellow commissioners said around, I am not very interested in doing a land transfer. There are lots of things that we can do where we still maintain. I, I don't want to spend money to lease a building, and that seems not in the best interest of the taxpayer, but I also want to maximize community benefit of this project. And I think that this is a unique way of looking for ways to do that. But I, not knowing going in to this alternative RFP, if, who you're meeting with is your convener and project manager, whose interest is that of the county's, is very different than saying, hey, I'm looking for a development partner who would be interested in, you know, maybe bringing money into this and what opportunities are out there. Both are fine. I might lean toward one more than the other, but both are fine, but not.
I think, Commissioner, if I could jump in, I think that, and Garrett, I'd love for you to speak some to this too, but the idea was that it's not a foregone conclusion, that the person who is in on this front end is the ultimate developer or owner. And so the language in the RFP has been a bit of either/or, kind of depending on how each step of this process goes and how the board responds to or makes decisions as this process moves forward.
Correct, yeah. And if you look at the Prosper Portland, Williams and Russell example there, what that does, it's a lot of times not just a single person that might be procured, it's kind of a team, and they're able to bring like some of that real-world knowledge of what financing would be available, what would be the cost of that, kind of that structure of the deal. But this RFP doesn't prescribe that they're now going to get those scopes of work or those future contracts, or that we've locked into the private financing. And so I think the validity of what, when we come back to you with the different options, it'll be up to you to discern, you know, what's the, you know, what's the intentions behind this? Have the goals that are put in this RFP for county services and community benefit? Do those meet the muster of what you see in any, you know, public dollars or land that would be going in that transfer? So I feel like we're setting up a lot of those same elements and goals to get to that future decision, and that that future decision, that hopefully will have that information for your discernment on, on the ways, the trade-offs of those.
What, depending on who we go with, what safeguards are in place in relationship to ensuring the best financial accountability or return for the taxpayer?
Do you want to talk about like the off-ramps piece of it, or a stage, like multi-stage? So I'll start talking to this in our procurement and other folks here. I mean, that's where, when, when Hayden was showing the map of the different, sort of stage gate stops, each, those are moments where you really check, and in our kind of county's history with these multi-stage contracts, you build kind of if the, if it's not to our muster, if it's not to our accounting goals and adhering to what we want to see, the contract ends, it doesn't go further. So I think that's a key piece of it. I think in, as we enter stage one and took the response I had to Commissioner Brim Edwards, that whole package of what are we buying off on now to really get into, because right now, we're not at anything really substantial, where, you know, but as we get into things that are more substantial, design, construction, land ownership, you're going to have a clear picture of that, of what you're buying off or not. And then the teeth of the contract of, once that's put in place, is where we can have that financial accountability and transparency built into it.
And I would just add, Commissioner, I think what you're hearing us say in response to these questions as well is, just is, this is going to be an iterative process, that the intent is that the, what you're approving today is allowing us to embark on this process that is going to start with the community engagement and visioning. Why, and that was why, when we were presenting, I was so clear about our commitment to continuous updates and engagement with you all as the board as well. updates and engagement with you all as the board as well. We want to be keeping you in the loop. We don't want you to be surprised by the time that we come back to you with something fleshed out. We want you to understand how we got there and have been brought along with us. And I think that that also allows for a greater level of accountability even prior to when we get to, Garrett prior, what Garrett just said about actually coming to you with a package for your consideration and approval.
And I would only add, I guess also based on going back to our downtown courthouse replacement project, that was a good example of where we had an off-ramp built in around the P3 decision. That was a yes, no, that we were going to have to bring to the board if that was something that the project wanted to continue. And I fully expect that this will have similar kinds of things built into it for that phase one, as it becomes more clear what the delivery process actually looks like and what the trade-offs are, those kinds of things. Because again, it's funny, the conversation that you, you know, mentioned in terms of developer, developer partner, we had this conversation in terms of what is this? What are we buying? And part of that is an artifact of, when I said before, we're coming to you very early, we're coming to you very early, and that means not everything has worked out yet. And so right now, this project's got $150,000 in an approved budget. It doesn't have all of the rest, and there's a lot of work still yet to be done. And it's that phase one work that that becomes really important to make sure that both we're balancing the needs and desires of the county and taxpayers, but also keeping fidelity with the community in terms of involvement in the process. So thank you. Those are excellent questions.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Singleton.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to my colleagues for some really critical and important questions, and I think helpful for us to know as we're thinking about the RFP and putting it together, and even some of the desires and goals of this body as this moves forward. I want to appreciate, I know it was not an easy place to get to in coming forward with an alternative approach. Bureaucracies like to do things the way that our bureaucracy is set up to do it. And so I know this is no small feat. So appreciate the team. And I know there's plenty others on your team, Brian, as well, as well as our legal department, who have been a part of these conversations to get us where we are today. So just want to, again, appreciate all of that work. I'm going to pre-apologize to your team because I am going to push on you on this timeline to get the RFP out the door. We do a lot of, I think to Stevens' earlier point of getting ready to do something, and like, I really want us to do the thing. So I'm just going to pre-apologize now because I know that's going to be irritating. As this board has recently acknowledged, we played a part in the ongoing displacement, gentrification, and erasure of the Black community in this area. And this is an opportunity for us to do things right this time. And sometimes doing things differently is uncomfortable. I'm going to ask folks to sit with some discomfort as we embark on something that we haven't done, but we know is the right way to do it. If we only do things the way that we always have, we produce the same results, and that's not what we're looking for here. This approach puts the commission firmly in the position of guiding the new process that engages our community, excuse me, maximizes the potential for the site, and brings much-needed updated, updates to these spaces. I'm grateful that my time on this commission has coincided, and I've gotten to spend time with and meet some amazing community members who have been working on this for decades. I'm really grateful that I get to sit here now and be a part of this project. And I will continue to advocate for it through the end. Excuse me. As I said at the presentation in June, opportunity is too light of a word for this. This is a joyous obligation, and I look forward to voting yes.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I just want to, again, thank the people who work and who are served at the county's Walnut Park Complex, and those who are working tirelessly to restore the physical look and feel of this area to match and enhance the strength of the people in the community. The action that we are taking today as a board is a major step towards growing the county's economic development toolkit by charting a path where the county can spur investment and development, not only for county-owned buildings, but alongside community-serving, wealth-building opportunities. And, you know, it's been discussed today, this specific development partnership, RFP, approach is new. It does build upon numerous local examples. The county itself has a history of acting as a leasing, a lease or property developer, transferring land, overseeing complex projects. The courthouse has been mentioned, the Behavior Health Resource Center, the Library Bond Capital Projects, right? These have all had been different iterations of development by the county. We have experience with the tools needed to deliver project with complex phases, funding streams, and deals with private partners. I, you know, I want to make sure that that is clearly acknowledged. I also know and appreciate the conversation today that the county has a long-term interest in being part of this community with both the services that we provide there, including the Northeast Health Clinic, and some of the priorities that the board has spoken to do today, Commissioner Brim Edwards, Commissioner Moyer, Commissioner Singleton. I have heard the same concerns about, from leaders throughout the county as we've been having conversations about this, who want to make sure that our interests are addressed from both the service delivery perspective and a financial soundness perspective for the county long term. So I expect to see how the county's needs are represented and addressed in the development proposal process that we're going to be entering into. But that being said, I do want to just express my gratitude for the county for leaning in and flexing new and different muscles as a part of this process to really create this path forward that we have before us today. I have personally spent my career, excuse me, supporting and working with and in community-based development organizations like Casienda, Apano, Albino Vision Trust. I know that the economic recovery that we want to see in our community, for all of our community, can come from homegrown talent. We don't need to be putting all of our hopes and dreams in someone from the outside coming to save us. I think we've had those promises before, and they have not always borne out. I believe that we can invest in and support the creativity and growth from people that we have here in our community. That investment in homegrown talent is going to attract others while also building diversified and sustainable base of jobs and businesses here in Multnomah County. And I will just like to close by saying, while we have political bullies on the national stage who are attacking efforts to address longstanding disparities, we are seeing that every day. I am proud that we are taking the opposite approach today. We heard from speakers very, very, very clearly back in June that the time to act is now. And that is why I'm so excited for this action today and the next steps for the county. So thank you all very much for that. Marina, can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Moyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brim Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones-Dixon?
Yes.
Chair Vega-Petersen?
Yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for that. We will now adjourn as the Public Contract Review Board and reconvene as the Multnomah County Board of Commissioners.
Our three, DCJ Adult Services Audit Presentation.
So just before we get to the item, I just want to flag, I might need to leave, depending on how long this goes. Okay, Marina, did you catch that? Commissioner Brim Edwards has to leave directly at noon, so she may have to. All right. Thank you, everyone. We are, as folks are exiting out of the room, I'd ask conversations to be done outside so that we can focus on our next agenda item. And I'd like to welcome Auditor McWark and her team today to talk about the DCJ Audit, DCJ Audit Services. So with that, I will turn it over to the Auditor McWark. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, for the record. I'm Jennifer McWark. I'm the Multnomah County Auditor, and I use she/her pronouns.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Nicole Dewees, Audit Director. I use she/her pronouns.
Hello. Good morning. I'm Moss Roberts. I use they/them pronouns.
Good morning. My name is Mikal Johannes, and I use she/her pronouns. And I guess I should say for the record.
Next slide, please. To begin, we would like to acknowledge the experiences of those on supervision and those who shared their challenging stories. We would also like to acknowledge the past and present harms of racism, trauma, and disparate treatment within the criminal justice system. And we would like to acknowledge the Department of Community Justice staff for their engagement with this audit. We learned during the audit that parole and probation officers have very challenging and complex jobs, and many make earnest efforts to improve the situation of those on supervision and the community. Next slide, please. Our agenda, we will cover why we did this audit, what we did, some context and definitions, findings and recommendations for sanctions, referrals and resources, the grievance process, data and reporting, and system-level needs. And finally, we'll have time for questions. Next slide, please. Why we did this audit. During our office's 2022 jail conditions audit, that audit found that one of the reasons people are sent to jail are violations of probation or post-prison conditions. While in jail, there is a disproportionate use of force for Black and African-American people and people with mental illness. That audit found that jail sanctions are a costly and disruptive intervention. Next slide, please. What we did for this audit. We conducted interviews and surveys for individuals with lived experience on supervision, DCJ staff, community organizations, and subject matter experts. We conducted data analysis of DCJ data, health department data, Multnomah County Sheriff's Office data about those in jail, analysis of random samples of case files and sanction forms from DCJ, and all grievance forms from 2019 onward on file at DCJ. Next slide, please. In this section, we'll share some context and definitions. Next slide, About DCJ's Adult Services Division, parole and probation officers, sometimes abbreviated to PPOs, oversee probation, post-prison, and other aspects of supervision. Supervision includes sanctions, housing, employment, and treatment resources. Next slide, please. About people on supervision. Adults on supervision declined from a population of 11,089 in 2019 to 6,613 in 2024. Black and Native American individuals are overrepresented in this community, in this population relative to their numbers in the community. Thirty-eight percent of those on supervision during this time have a documented history of homelessness while on supervision, and 26% have a documented history of serious mental illness. Next slide, please. Community supervision requirements. Supervision includes standard requirements called conditions. Conditions could include consent to be searched and visited, required meetings with a PPO, otherwise known as reporting, living at the address provided to the PPO, and not possessing firearms. Next slide, please. This section will address our findings and recommendations related to sanctions. Next slide, please. How sanctions work. A PPO may sanction those who violate probation or post-prison conditions. Violations are categorized as new crimes, public safety, or technical violation, and they can be a combination of any of the above. Both new crimes and technical violations may involve threats to public safety. Next slide, please. Under the ORS, PPOs don't have to sanction those on supervision to jail. Sanctions could also include a requirement to attend treatment, verbal or written reprimand, community service, or electronic monitoring. Next slide, please. DCJ's Initiatives to Reduce Jail Use. In 2015, DCJ participated in initiatives to reduce jail use and eliminate racial and ethnic disparities. DCJ's own 2017 Best Practices in Community Justice document notes that sanctions to jail or prison for technical violations worsen recidivism. Next slide, please. Technical sanction days increased from 2019 to 2024. The dark blue that you can see on the chart are the sanctioned days per year, and then the brighter blue is the population that you can see has gone down since 2019. Next slide, please. The most common technical sanction during that time was failure to report to a required meeting with a PPO. Next slide, please. Jail sanctions can cause harm. They can hinder employment, get in the way of housing, impact child custody, interrupt drug and alcohol treatment, destabilize those with serious mental illness, create barriers to accessing health care. These impacts extend to the families and communities of those on supervision. Next slide, please. Based on that, our recommendation is that DCJ should reduce the harmful impact of jail. And PPOs should recommend jail sanctions only for public safety threats. And DCJ should create a policy that defines public safety threats with clear, measurable criteria. Next slide, please. We found that sanctions disproportionately impacted Black and African-Americans and Native Americans relative to their population on supervision. So the chart shows that those bars in orange reflect the difference between the percent of those individuals on supervision compared to the percent of those individuals who are sanctioned. And in blue, it shows those groups who were sanctioned less relative to their population on supervision. Next slide, please. Based on these disparities, we recommend that DCJ should address disparities in sanctions and racial equity by creating public data dashboards updated quarterly with data about sanctions and abscondions disaggregated by race, caseloads, and units. Next slide, please. People who abscond tend to be homeless and/or have mental health conditions. An abscond is an unauthorized absence from community supervision. DCJ has no guidance requiring PPOs to seek out unhoused people. And we learned during the audit that DCJ has increased the minimum number of sanction days for absconds. Next slide, please. Individuals who absconded were more likely to have a history of mental illness or homelessness. The blue in the chart shows the percent of people of those categories who struggle with mental illness or homelessness relative to their populations on supervision, which is a significant disparity. Next slide, please. In response, our recommendation is that DCJ should develop a strategy to prevent failures to report and absconding supervision. They should develop a policy that defines minimum efforts that should be made to locate an individual by a PPO, and provide and document resources and/or referrals to those at risk of absconding due to homelessness. Next
Thank you, Moss. For the record, my name is Mikal Johannes, and I use she/her pronouns. I want to echo Moss's thanks for everyone that engaged in this audit. In addition to our data analysis, we heard many people's stories, including DCJ staff and other county staff, people with lived experience, and people directly providing services. We are deeply grateful for their contributions. Next slide, please. I will cover our sections about resources and referrals and the grievance process. So our second focus in this audit was about access to resources and referrals. When we started this audit, we heard feedback from community members that they would like for us to look at what type of resources are provided. what type of resources are provided to people on supervision. We focused on areas that are within DCJ's control, which is making referrals to treatment for people under supervision. Our research and data analysis shows that completing referred treatment programs helps improve outcomes for people on supervision. We also learned that the most frequent types of referrals include drug and alcohol treatment, specific court-mandated treatment based on conviction, and referrals to mental health treatment. Next slide. We learned that there are barriers to providing resources and referrals. From our interviews with DCJ staff, we heard that they face unclear expectations about the referral process. We also found inconsistent documentation about referrals. This means many individuals with documented needs may not be receiving the referrals they require to address the underlying issues. The lack of documentation also makes it harder to track what happens after referrals are made. We also highlighted the importance of low-barrier resource models that can more quickly connect people to services while they wait to be connected to treatment referrals. Next slide. To address these findings, we recommend that DCJ set clear expectations for staff about providing and documenting resources and referrals. We also recommend that DCJ advocate for funding to expand low-barrier resource models like the stabilization and readiness programs for high-risk individuals on supervision. Next slide. We also analyzed access to culturally responsive resources. Overall, we found that there is a clear need for more culturally specific resources to effectively meet the diverse needs of those on supervision. We acknowledge the culturally responsive services that are currently offered at DCJ. And given the high need for these services, we recommend increasing them. In addition, when we looked at the demographic data, we found that Black people and likely Native American individuals are overrepresented in DCJ's supervision population compared to their overall representation in Multnomah County. These communities are also overrepresented in negative outcomes on supervision, such as sanctions. To promote more successful outcomes, individuals highlighted the importance of cultural understanding that can be provided through culturally responsive resources. Next slide. So we recommend that DCJ should consistently advocate to the board for funding to expand access to culturally responsive resources and referrals. Next slide. We also analyzed mental health needs among DCJ's population. We found that there was a high need for mental health referrals and resources. However, there were low documented referrals overall. From 2019 to 2023, 32% of individuals received documented referrals. This is despite a high need among DCJ's population for these services. Next slide. We recommend that DCJ should consistently document needs and advocate for resources by documenting the identified needs, such as mental health assessments, treatment, and housing resources, and requiring staff to provide and document corresponding resources and referrals. We also recommend that DCJ expand access to mental health treatment for all those in high-risk units through documented referrals and resources. Next slide. We also identified some promising practices within DCJ that are working well. The Stabilization and Readiness Program is a low-barrier program for the mental health unit, and we've heard that it has had remarkable success in engaging some of the highest-risk and highest-need individuals. This program offers direct resources and is able to engage individuals who are very high-risk. It also highlights the significant and potential of direct and accessible resource models. Additionally, DCJ contracts with community-based providers for culturally specific reentry services, and we have heard positive comments and that they're making a positive impact, particularly in connecting individuals to vital housing and employment opportunities as they transition from incarceration. We recommend that DCJ continue to advocate for these promises, promising practices within budget discussions. And our key takeaway from this example is that effective, supportive approaches are possible and can yield positive outcomes for individuals on supervision. Next slide. Finally, our third section of the report is about the grievance process. I want to give thanks to my colleague in the auditor's office, Suneva Bennett, for conducting the analysis of grievance forms while I was out on parental leave earlier this year. Next slide. We found that DCJ should improve the grievance process for individuals on supervision. This is a topic that came up in our interviews as well as through our office's ombudsperson function. We learned about accessibility barriers for individuals to submit grievance forms and inconsistent retention of forms and follow-up. This inconsistent documentation prevents systemic analysis and accountability for reoccurring issues and poses a risk when concerns about inappropriate actions are raised. In the response letter, the DCJ mentions other ways to report complaints, such as the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training, which also has their own complaint process. However, we learned that people do not always receive a timely response when they use this avenue, making it even more important that DCJ has an accessible and well-functioning grievance process. Next slide. To strengthen the grievance process, we recommend that DCJ make it more accessible by providing more information through the printed materials intake during the initial intake meeting. We also recommend that DCJ ensures proper two-year retention of grievance forms as required by law. Next slide. We're just continuing our grievance recommendations here. We recommend that DCJ also provides an online grievance submission process, assigns responsibility to a staff member to track and investigate complaints, and publishes annual reports on grievance trend to the DCJ director and the Board of County Commissioners. Next slide, please. Our audit put forth a series of 24 recommendations. You can find the full list of recommendations at the end of the audit report. We've already covered most of the recommendations for DCJ management. Next, we'll share some broader recommendations about data and the recommendations for the Board of County Commissioners to address larger structural issues we have identified. Next slide. To promote transparency and accountability, we recommend that DCJ report on the following data: technical violations that are not for public safety reasons, disaggregated by race, the reasons individuals fail to report or abscond supervision, the number of people on supervision at DCJ who are experiencing homelessness, racial disparities in sanctioning, and an evaluation of the effective practices in community supervision use among parole and probation officers. Next slide. Finally, we highlight the crucial role that county leadership, the crucial role of county leadership in addressing some of the systemic level needs that we've identified. Next slide. We recommend that the board ensures that there is adequate case management for housing needs of people who are discharged from supervision. We also recommend that the board build capacity for housing countywide through increasing coordination between departments at regular meetings and contracting with community-based providers for reentry services. We also recommend that the board increase capacity for inpatient mental health treatment for people who have a criminal record. Next slide. In conclusion, we believe that the full implementation of the audit recommendations will support a more accountable and equitable community supervision system. We hope that this audit provides an opportunity to reflect on current practices, reduce disparities in our justice system, and ultimately lead to systemic changes. Our next steps are to share the audit results with the public. And then we will also follow up on audit recommendations once the due date has passed for all of our recommendations. All of the recommendations have a due date for full implementation by May 31, 2027. For the follow-up, we evaluate whether recommendations have been implemented, and then we publish a follow-up report, a public follow-up report. So again, we just want to thank you for your time and engagement with this audit. We look forward to hearing your questions. And the final slide. Next slide, please. And we can go one more. This final slide shares our website, where you can find all of our reports, sign up for our newsletter, and learn more about the work of our office. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate coming before the board and walking through the audit that was done for DCJ. We, so for the board, this is our time to ask the auditor and her team questions about the audits. If you had questions for the department, we do have folks there, but we'll go through. But we want to make sure that this first round of questions really is focused on the auditor and her team and questions about the audits. And then if you had questions for the departments, we can call them up afterwards. With that, I will open it up to the board for questions, and we'll start with Commissioner Jones-Dixon.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report out, and thank you for the audit. As many of you know, this is an area that I'm most passionate about and most interested in. Shout out to Director Denise and the rest of the team that's here as well. And one of the things that I tend to lead with is just the folks that are under our care and going through the process. How are they leaving? And whether or not we're receiving feedback directly from them? So it's something I've talked to Director Penya about. I'll start with my questions, and then I'll go off on just the future. Through the forum, the audit specifically, did you notice any trends as far as specific PPOs or parole officers giving more sanctions than others? Is that, I didn't see that in the.
Thank you for your question. Yes, we did see variation between different units at DCJ and between different caseloads or PPOs, even when those caseloads had a similar risk level and similar demographics. And of course, there's a lot of complexity, but we were attentive to that variation. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Yes, it does.
Thank you.
One of my mentors, he always says, you can't fix a secret. So again, I really, I'm not going to go through with all the questions. It's a lot of the things that were shown in the audit were things that I know, that I've heard directly from community members, and I've talked to the staff about it. I know the majority of our leadership team, I'm looking at our leadership team now, Tira and Director Penya, they're aware of that, and they're working on those things. I just want to express to everyone here, the auditor has a role, and we're all here committed to ensure that we're delivering the best services to all of our community members. I know we focus a lot on, as far as victims. I've been a victim myself, but also we need to examine how are we serving the folks that are in our care, and we need to be intentional as far as receiving feedback from them. So I'll leave it there. Three years to build with you and our team moving forward. And also, I wanted to say thank you to our parole officers for your service and your commitment to ensuring that folks are able to continue to be productive members in our community. So thank you again.
All right. Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Singleton.
Thank you. Thank you all for your work on this. I think I have less questions more than I have like yes-and's. So something that comes up to me in reading your audit is just the need for us to double down on de-siloing the county, and particularly around data. I feel like the issue of absconding could be really minimized if we had better connection with our CBOs and the folks who are actually working with that 38% of people who are experiencing homelessness. We have a reliance on asking people who might be disorganized on if they have other case managers or other people in their lives, and this isn't just a DCJ issue. That's why I say the county writ large. And that's completely ineffective. And I think your audit here points out we need to come up with other ways to ensure that the people that we're serving, whether they touch the county through DCJ, through homeless services, through the Health Department, they're likely touching all three. And we don't actually have an ability right now to look at that data and know that that's happening and develop more interdisciplinary team approaches. So I think, yes, what you have in here about the data, and I would want to see us go a bit further as we think about that as a county. And I think similarly with the referrals, I don't know if you all, during the budget process, this came up so many times about info and referral, and what is the utility of that versus how do we actually get people linked to the next step of the program? Because so many of our programs have waiting lists, the idea of just having a number isn't super helpful. And so I appreciate you uplifting that here as well. I think when we get to, there is a question I have for Director Penya. I've heard there's some challenges with the data, and I think your report says that as well on how to pull data and some of the technical systems that we have. And so I have some questions for the director that I would love to ask when we move on to that. But just, again, want to appreciate your work. I know it's not easy. I think recommendations are recommendations. I've been, as a former department director, in a position of saying, I agree with this recommendation, and I don't agree with this one. And that's the reality of what is part of our process. And so I think that component is just important to highlight that sometimes there's things that are already being worked on and may still show up in an audit as a recommendation. And then sometimes there's things that the experts in the field may say this piece doesn't make sense. And I appreciate that you all hold space for all of that to be true. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bram Edwards.
Thank you. Thank you for the audit. And as I always say about audits, they're really a tool for systems improvement. So I appreciate that. I also want to just share my appreciation for the staff and the PPOs at DCJ and the work they do. I am appreciative that the response from DCJ to many of the recommendations, especially related to documentation, referrals, data sharing, were that they agreed with them and are going to be moving forward with implementing systems. And this is going to fall into the yes-and category, somewhat similar to, so the yes-and with Commissioner Singleton, because I found that the heart of the recommendations and the reason why sanctions were being sort of the, for a variety of reasons, was chale, and the recommendation was that there be an increase in referrals and that there was lack in documentation or consistency. But I really think that the call for referrals around mental health, housing, treatment, in many ways, the referral is not outside of DCJ's portfolio, but the actual provision of those services are outside of it. And I think we have to really be careful about avoiding the sort of performative action of like, hey, we got that taken care of. There actually, we're documenting, and they're providing referrals. But if there is no service. referrals, but if there is no service, it actually is just a check, you know, becomes sort of a check the box. We did that portion of it, and being able to ensure, and again, this, so for me, this audit in many ways is a call to action to the Health Department and the Homeless Services Department of ensuring that when that referral comes through, that there is actually services on the other, on the other end. Same thing with Corrections Health. While it is occurring in a correctional setting, that is a Health Department core competency and required service. So again, how do we take the audit response and really link it to the other county functions that are responsible for connecting that referral to something, because that's what will make the audit meaningful, not that the referral happened, but that actually there was a connection to service. I did have a question about the, both the audit, the management response, I have a question for the auditors about the management response and the testimony we had during public comment about the jail being the sanction, because in the, in the audit response, there was a response from DCJ that there are a variety of requirements they have in Oregon law, and judges, the parole board, and court jurisdiction, case law, about why they did not fully, they totally, only partially accepted this recommendation. And I'm curious about whether you took that into consideration, that there are these constraints that exist, that aren't just DCJ decided that they're going to use jail. So I'm curious about how that was taken into consideration when you came up with that recommendation. And I have a similar question for DCJ.
Yes, thank you for your question. Yeah, there are many things that are out of DCJ's control. They're part of a bigger system, and we acknowledge that. I do think, though, that there are things under DCJ's control. So the law does require them, for example, to report abscondions, but they can do more to prevent abscondions by trying to track people down and find them. Additionally, DCJ has shown a commitment at reducing jail sanctions in the past. For example, they changed their practices to lower jail sanctions during the COVID pandemic without any changes to the law. And also, DCJ has previously lowered jail sanctions as part of their Safety and Justice Project work by adjusting their internal practices. So they certainly are part of a big system, and they can't control everything, but there are some important things that they can.
So although your recommendation was sort of not using it at all, you do recognize that there are, because I think what a hearing you say is they can, they have some things that they can do to reduce it, but complete elimination, they may not have that within there because they're part of a larger system.
I don't think we recommended completely abolishing it, but it was really to use it for imminent and direct public safety threats. So if somebody doesn't report, maybe that's not the best response, given the harms that the team found and that people have reported. And I also want to say that we recognize also that in working with people of different parts of the system, there can be a lot of pressure on DCJ to maintain practices that they know from their own studies might not be the best. And so it's really then incumbent on this board to really support use of best practices and provide that leadership and guidance to them so that they know, they have your support as they try to perhaps reinstate some of those practices that they used during COVID.
And maybe this is a follow-up, but it looked like in the response that public safety isn't the only, isn't the only driver from these other entities about why somebody would end up in, the sanction being jail versus something else. And I know you're all not lawyers either, but I think I would like to better understand that because it appeared from the responses from DCJ is there are other things besides public safety in which there may be a requirement. So I'd like to better understand that again, just the, what the feasibility of the implementation. I, also, let's see, I think my questions were for DCJ.
We just want to make sure to answer that question, if it was a question.
Pardon?
We want to make sure to answer that question, if it was a question.
Well, it is a question, but I also think it's probably a legal question, and I saw all the long list of people who are involved in that. And so I would want to understand sort of what, where DCJ has the flexibility and where they don't in that particular space, because it looked like from the response that came back from the chair and DCJ that they don't always have the flexibility.
Yeah, so there are two categories to simplify it. Laws, which are requirements, is one category that Nicole spoke to with regard to what they must report and what they don't have to report. The other category mentioned there are not legal requirements, it's pressure from system partners that Otter McGurk mentioned, such as judges, the board, probation parole, perhaps the DA, public pressure. And pressure is something that you can help them with, but it's not quite the same as a legal requirement. It is a real factor they have to contend with, and the reason I'm drawing this line in the sand is that they do have some flexibility, and we know that because they've done some of these initiatives before, and the legal landscape in terms of strict requirements was the same then as it is now.
Thanks, and I look forward to also hearing DCJ talk about it. I am also curious if you want to respond to the critique that there wasn't also taken into consideration or part of the audit, and it's fine to say it's not, but the critique that victims weren't part of the, just part of the audit or interviewed as part of this.
I'll say that we, we believe that in many ways that that feels like a red herring, that the scope of this audit was narrow, it was about the experiences of those on supervision. And so while we strongly support victims and victims' rights, we commend PPOs for the hard work they do at protecting victims, this just simply wasn't in the scope of the audit, and that's how all audits function, is that there's a narrow scope from the outset. So we fully support victims, their rights and protections, that just wasn't in the scope of the audit. Thank you.
And can I add another note about that? Though we didn't emphasize outcomes for victims in this audit for the reason Nicole just mentioned, we do emphasize prevention, because a punitive response like a jail sanction may happen after harm has occurred, and then it, on some levels from the victim's perspective, is too late, so then it's harm to the victim and then harm to the individual who committed that harm and their community, and on and on. And so that's where our recommendations focus, and we believe that with all these evidence-based practices, it will improve things for PPOs who are exposed to all this vicarious trauma when people on their caseloads don't have adequate resources and are not stabilized. And we think it will improve things for the community, and we very much care about public safety. So that's a little bit about the background of our, and logic of our audit. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore, you hadn't had a chance to ask your questions to the auditor, so I wanted to make sure you had them. And then I know Commissioner Jones-Dixon, you had a follow-up question for the auditor. Okay, great.
I had some questions after we spoke and also reviewing the audit in relationship to the expectations of individuals with compromise executive functioning due to a variety of pre-existing conditions. How well-informed and trained, and this may not have been in the scope of your audit, but I am concerned that I look at some of these things and I'm like, well, sorry, duh, they don't show up to appointments. Not that they don't need supervision or that is not an important component for community safety, but to what degree did you look at the information and understanding of probation officers of the individual's disability? And to what degree were their supervision plans adapted toward the reality of the disability
Well, one thing that we looked at was just the data that's collected and about demographic information to inform people, how people are supervised, like what information would a PPO have access to about an individual? We didn't find that disability data was being collected, so I think as demographic data, perhaps there's another way that it's being collected, but that's not something that we found was being collected as demographic data. And part of that is some of the limitations for how PPOs enter data into the statewide system that has some limitations about what, what demographic data is collected.
What information, maybe this is better for the department, are we given either if somebody ends up on supervision from the jail court system directly, or if they come from our state prison system? What information is available to a probation officer that would help them understand the challenges an individual might be facing?
Yeah, I think we, we found that some of the data, demographic data was limited, but I think this might be also a question that DCJ can answer.
I bring this up because I think we have a fairly systemic problem in Multnomah County, particularly in relationship to law enforcement, jail, probation, even sometimes health, of people who are interacting very frequently with people with complex behavioral health diagnoses and not understanding them fundamentally, and then therefore not creating a plan that has a very high degree chance of success. I don't know the origin. I do worry significantly about the training that we make available. I think there are lots of people with excellent intentions who don't have the tools or the understanding to, to put together a plan that's going to be successful. And so I'm, I'm just really curious about, yeah, and this is, of the people you interviewed, did you, please don't name names, did you observe a variance in understanding of these type of issues amongst staff and see varying approaches to overcoming these obstacles?
Thank you for your questions. What I will say is we did interview people at DCJ who have a vocabulary and experience working with some of the highest need people in the county, and they understand what that is about. Where we found concerning variation was in guidance for them and structures to support those consistent case plans, and so that's where our attention was focused, if that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Commissioner Jones-Dixon.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Chair, and again, thank you for the presentation. I meant to mention this in my remarks. This is one of the reasons why I've been advocating for a piece of technology to manage the process for individuals that are in our care and to bring those systems together. Steve Cicatelli from the Sheriff's Office yesterday mentioned that they're working with DCJ now, and I've heard that there's been struggles working with HSD as far as ensuring folks are having housing and things like that. So you'll hear more from our office as far as like exploring those options to bring those things together so we can have data to actually see, real-time data to actually see the systems that are supporting folks that are in our care and tracking just the success as we continue to build America's favorite county. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you. I want to thank you very much, all of you, for the work on this audit. I know it is, you know, audits by their nature focus on a sliver based on like, you know, the interviews that you do and kind of the scoping that you do and figuring that out, and we all know that the work that we do across the county is complex and vast, and it's hard to. So I appreciate you focusing on this and the work that you did. I think that the, you know, we have, we have, at the county in my time that we've been here, we have, we have really tried to focus across all of the ways that we touch our justice system on how do we, how are we addressing disparities and inequities? How are we going to a potentially more restorative, less punitive justice system, right? And I see this audit in alignment with that intention, and so I appreciate that. So I just want to say my gratitude for that, and I think audits in general are just, you know, help us as we focus on and continue to prioritize the continuous quality improvement and the ways that we can, you know, reflect on the work that's being done and how that can be approved, improved. I also do, you know, appreciate that there were some directions to the board in the audit that was contained, and, you know, some of those were about focusing on, on some budgeting, you know, issues and recommendations around, you know, investing more in a certain thing, and I think that's something that we all have to keep in mind in, in a time, you know, we just got done with a, with a hard budget period, we're looking at more years of budget constraints, and so really thinking about how those precious resources are being allocated and prioritized as we're thinking about those, those bigger term goals that we have at the county, the values that we have, that's part of the work that we've done with the mission, vision, values work and the strategic plan work that's happening now, and, and these audits are another way of, of bringing that kind of focus and attention to some of these things as we're, as we're thinking about that. So I think that will be helpful for the board as well. So thank you, Otter McGurk and your team for this. We do have DCJ here to answer some questions for the board, and it sounded like some commissioners had that, so I'm going to invite them up, but again, thank you so much for all of your All right, and I.
Just as a courtesy, could I ask some other county commissioners? Because I have to go, I ask my one question, is that it?
Yes. I see, I'm seeing that, and please, Commissioner Bram, and then Commissioner Singleton, I think you have to go as well, so we'll go to you next, is that right?
Sure.
Okay. Maybe you don't, but I heard you did.
I'm hearing, yes.
So I appreciate the courtesy. So I think you heard my question. I'm curious about the sort of response on the flexibility you think you, you might, you might have, and the lack of flexibility on some things, and anything else I asked that you want to comment on?
Good afternoon, Commissioner Chairs. For the record, Denise Penya, I'm the Director of DCJ, I use she/her pronouns. I'm going to.
of DCJ. I use she/her pronouns. I'm going to start off, and then I'm going to send this over to Tira Hubbard, our Adult Director, to fully answer your question, Commissioner. At this point, as far as the flexibility, the state uses a sanctioning grid that is applicable to all 36 counties. And so we do follow a sanctioning grid that is not a DCJ or Multnomah County-created grid. It's created by the state of Oregon that we follow.
Good morning, Tira Hubbard. She/her pronouns for the record. Before answering that, I just want to note, when I was interviewing DCJ, think about working here, well, they were interviewing me to see if I was a good fit. One of the things that I looked into was the sanctioning practices. So I had pulled DCJ's sanctioning practices to look at them and compare them to what I was seeing in statewide sanctioning practices. That is one of the reasons that I wanted to be a part of this community and a part of this department, was that I really saw that DCJ was leading the state and doing restorative work and trying to limit the use of jail as much as possible. So as much as we have room for growth, we're also way ahead of the game. Some of our limitations come in OAR and ORS. And so that was referenced earlier. When we talk about absconctions, what we're talking about is warrants. So we, as parole and probation officers, have a requirement, which is outlined in ORS and OAR, to report violations of conditions to the sentencing authority. So the courts maintain authority over those probation cases. The parole board maintains authority over those post-prison cases. We have to report that. If someone not just fails to report, but they fail to engage and follow the conditions that have been outlined by a sentencing authority, we don't get to overrule that. We have to report that. We do that through a report that equates to a warrant. Once a warrant is in effect, law enforcement are required to respond to that warrant by getting that warrant cleared. That is most often done through taking them to the jail where that warrant is cleared. There are very few scenarios where that isn't the case. So just to note, absconction equates to warrant. And warrant, once that's issued, we're not the ones issuing the warrant. A judge is signing that warrant, or the parole board is signing that warrant. So we have to report the absconction, and then the sentencing authority is who issues the warrant.
Thank you. And just as a follow-up, and just for my future knowledge, can you, after the meeting, send me the sanctioning grid that you're required to follow? I'd appreciate that. Is there anything else that you want to respond to that I asked about?
What I would just add to that, you know, Tira highlighted the supervisory authority. And so while we can have either the parole board or the courts being portrayed as applying pressure to DCJ, they're actually the local supervisory authority of the cases. So again, I just want to uplift Tira's obligation that we have to report back to the local supervisory authorities.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Singleton.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you all for coming and being available for questions, too. I think, I just want to start with saying, I want us to be careful about our expectations of any department to meet the needs of the people we serve when they don't actually hold the responsibility to do so. And I think Commissioner Brim Edwards raised that with you all. I think I need to say the same thing for the Homeless Services Department. They can't provide housing for everybody on supervision who needs it. There are so many barriers, including lack of access to affordable housing, lack of access to employment for people post-incarceration, as well as the screening barriers in place. So I think as a body, if this board wants to take action, there's things that we need to do and lobby for at the state level regarding how much power landlords have to deny people access to apartments that have nothing to do with their ability to actually be a good tenant. So I wanted to put that on the record before I jumped into questions. And Director, I want to thank you. We got to happen to have our check-in yesterday. And I heard you say, as we were discussing some of this, that the way the data is pulled and kind of how the system is set up can be misleading in that there may be multiple violations, but only one is really seen. I want to understand what we're doing to make that change, because there's, in the presentation, Slide 18 shows clear disparities. And this other piece may be true. So how are we getting to fix this so we can actually see the data and understand what are we sanctioning people for? And how are we going to address what are disparities in the data as it currently stands?
One of the things that we are already working on implementing is we're a response-to-violations policy. Per OAR, POs are allowed to sanction up to 30 days. DCJ has gone above and beyond that, and we are limiting POs through the new response-to-violations policy to five days without manager approval. So that requires a staffing with a manager to make sure that even though we're within the sanctioning grid, we want to make sure that we are using jail only when necessary and most appropriately. So we're already working on putting that into place. We're also updating our detainer and warrant policy to address some of the recommendations regarding the steps necessary to try and locate individuals prior to reporting that warrant, absconction behavior to sentencing authorities. The other ways that we track information and data is regarding some of our treatment referrals. So that was one of the areas of recommendation, and actually one of the areas that I had looked at at DCJ prior to coming to work here. It's also one of the areas that we've set for our priorities for this fiscal year, is to be able to improve our documentation. So I think it's worth noting that it's not an absence of referrals. It was, it was an absence of documenting them all in one place. So we couldn't pull the data all in one place. So we're already working with Department of Corrections to get some training on appropriate documentation within the system so that it's all in one place. Same thing with the sanctions. We were able to work with our RAP team following the audit to be able to start pulling all of the violations and sort of looking at those, sorting through those, and being able to do a deeper dive into our practices.
And Commissioner, I would just add, because we are committed to reducing racial disparities in our sanctioning, and so we're also integrating an internal RRI dashboard into regular sanctioning practice reviews. And Tira and her team are going to start that with management next month.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If I could just jump in, too, because you're asking sort of a big systemic question as well. I think these are like the initiatives. I'm Suzanne Brown McBride. I'm the Deputy Director at DCJ, I use she/her pronouns. I think you're absolutely right, that our data is fragmented across a bunch of different systems, including DCJ's internal systems as well as state systems. And so there's work that we need to do to try to harmonize that. I think also some of the challenge that we're facing is that a lot of the data that we have is contextual. You know, like in the audit, there's a discussion around like, oh, well, things that are only immediately public safety risk should be the things that should qualify one for jail sanctions. Sometimes, though, behaviors are contextual, things that people are sanctioning on are contextual, right? Like, somebody simply, like, using alcohol, for example, might not be a warning factor, unless that's something connected to like a domestic violence incident that we know is connected to their criminogenic behavior, right? And so the data system struggles under the ability to sort of describe that completely. But what the audit, I think, has given us an opportunity to do is to understand sort of the need to be able to dive deep, because there has been a lot of different layers under sort of the initial findings that have helped us understand what's going on, but will continue to guide us forward. And so I think your point about sort of like, how is DCJ thinking about trying to harmonize that data is a really good one, especially among and across the counties. There's really good questions around what information should a criminal justice agency have about anybody's background, anybody's health information, or, you know, mental health status. Like, all of those things, I think, are really important questions. And I think we're excited to have those conversations and sort of also recognize the complexity of trying to provide those answers really clearly.
Thank you. I really appreciate the multi-level. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, sure. Thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to point out that the data we used for this, when there were sanctions, the data showed us only the most serious violations. So it didn't just give us a random violation that led to the sanction, because there are multiple violations, but it was categorized to give us the most serious. When we were connecting violations with sanctions for a particular incident, the data was focused on the most serious, just to clarify that.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind of multiple levels of response to that. And I think I do want to just bring in what I heard in some of the public comment, as a former social worker doing work in the domestic violence, not a former social worker, but formerly doing work in the domestic violence system. It may not show up as a public safety issue, but that harm or potential harm to the victim, I don't know if we need to be advocating for a different categorization or how that can show up, because that is really serious. And it often, I think, is so undervalued that we see so many people who are survivors of this violence go on to base continued violence, because a piece of paper doesn't stop somebody from doing that. So I want to acknowledge that, and that I think what I'm getting at here for us is, there's some things that we can do, and then there's some things that we might need to advocate for at the state. And I want us to be really clear, not everything needs to be a long session, big policy, big budget bill. Some of it is small systems things and data pieces that can be done outside of session. And I would like to start understanding what those needs are here, just like we did with the health systems and getting SOGI data. There's things that we need to ask to change, and I would like for us to be leaders in that at Multnomah County, and know how we can show up as elected officials to support that work and really get some of this stuff moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moyer.
Yeah. I have had longstanding frustration with the state and some of their guidelines being maybe not as nuanced, or as, I mean, if you think this is bad, the PSRB is unreal with how unreal, like, crazy restrictive. But I do have questions and concerns, you know, I have expressed my concern that we are so stretched that the ability of a parole probation officer to have the capacity to come up with creative solutions to complicated situations is real. I believe that. I believe when you start having caseloads that are really high, the ones that are going to go south are the really fairly complicated ones. So I acknowledge that in my questions. This is an area I'm much more knowledgeable about pre-trial and a lot less knowledgeable about post. What is the process for an individual with a disability to have a reasonable accommodation in their parole probation plan? And how do you do that?
So I think one important factor where we start with is, what are they on supervision for? So we've talked about victims, and so what are the risks to the victim in the case? So we have to kind of start with that, and POs have to take that into account. That's also how we place them into specific units. So we talked about differences between units. A lot of our units are made up based on the crime of conviction. So we have POs who specialize in specific crime categories. I think one of the public testimony earlier was regarding a domestic violence unit. One of the things we do is, when we work with individuals, is we complete a risk needs assessment with them. We're gathering collateral information at that point. We're self-reports from the individual, looking at treatment histories, family marital, we're looking at their leisure activities or employment, patterns of behavior. And within that, things regarding disabilities and abilities are going to come up. We then develop a case plan based specifically on that individual, because when we talk about evidence-based practices, we're talking about risk, need, and responsiveness. So we're identifying their risk to commit more harms, their risk to recidivate, first and foremost. Within that, we're looking at victims and concerns for those victims' rights and for victim's safety. Next, we're looking at needs. Part of the needs we're looking at is their sort of their criminogenic pathways into the system, and where we need to be focusing our efforts to refer to treatment, to supervise, to build a plan based specifically on those needs. One of those needs is we're looking at patterns, patterns of behavior, because we don't do diagnostic and we don't do treatment, but what we do is we identify behaviors. So if somebody's behaviors are a component of their disability or their ability, that's what we want to focus in on, and that's the services we want to make sure we're getting them connected to. The last is the responsiveness, and so that's very individualized. And so we're able to build a plan specific to that individual's needs, taking into account their risk and needs. When we see that someone has severe and persistent mental illness, as an example, we make sure we get them transferred to our mental health unit, where they get to work with officers who receive additional training beyond that of all of our officers, and have some of those resources available, like contractors in the building who provide mental health services and supports.
Sure. That doesn't totally answer my question, because I'm wondering, that's not an accommodation in the, like, framework of the ADA. So I will use a different diagnosis that might impact. Let's say this individual has traumatic brain injury, has a history of domestic violence, that is why they're there. They have documented deficits in ability to manage and understand time, and general organizational issues. So it is known that they are going to have a hard time with any kind of showing up to meetings. How would that individual, if we knew that, and do we know that, how would that be approached in order for the disability to not be the cause of why somebody is sanctioned?
Thank you for that clarity. For an example like that, we would absolutely be able to work based on their needs. That's part of what fits into that broader scope of responsiveness. So examples could be, one, we don't request a warrant just because they missed an appointment. It's usually a series. They've been absent for a time, and during that time, we've gone to find them in the community. We've contacted their partner, their family members, their friends. We're trying to connect with them. We don't want people to abscond. We can't restore community if we can't have contact with people. So in that sense, we might do things like, we do our visits with them at wherever their place of safety is. We go and connect with them. We might call them and remind them of visits. We might send frequent reminders if they have another case manager in their life, connecting with that case manager to assist in that. It's not generally just a one-and-done. It's a multiple efforts are made to try and create engagement, because we want people engaging with us.
Is that a uniform-trained practice? Like, everybody knows this is how you approach these situations, and-
So I would jump in for this one, Commissioner. So we don't have like a formalized ADA accommodation, like we would for an employee, for example, but it is something, this is part of that responsiveness that Director Hubbard was speaking about earlier. And again, POs knowing that when we work with, we don't work with an individual only. We're typically working with their family, with their treatment providers. So it really is relying on a lot of our collateral contacts as well, to ensure that someone who has difficulty reporting for other reasons, that we want them to be successful. And so we will make our efforts to engage others that would help.
And this might be a counsel question. Does the ADA apply to parole probation?
The ADA applies to access to services for members of the community, but wouldn't alleviate a person from being responsible for complying with the terms and conditions of their probation.
But do the terms and conditions of the probation need to be accommodated for a disability? Like, does that make sense? So let's say we had somebody who was quadriplegic, and they're told to report somewhere that has stairs and is not ADA accessible. Is it legally required of us to make an accommodation for that person?
And so accessibility to county services would be exactly the sort of thing that the ADA would apply to. So being able to walk into a building, being able to access the parole and probation officer that they're assigned to, being able to have dialogue, either through assisted devices or- assisted devices or through even interpretation could be something that the ADA would apply to.
Thanks. Great. Thank you. And you did not have any questions for the department at this time? That's correct. Okay. Thank you so much for making yourselves available and for the response that you did. We appreciate all the work. And again, thank you so much for the work on this audit as well. We have had a really good discussion today and I think this is something, an area of interest for everyone. I also appreciate the chance to share a little bit more and delve into the work that DCJ does and how they do that work. I think that's always a great opportunity to do that. So thank you all for being here today and for taking the time to that. We're a little bit over today, but I did want to offer a chance for the board to have final announcements as we are done with our regular agenda today. So I would open it up if anyone had anything to share. Okay. I figured that's why you came back.
Did you miss me last week?
I just have a couple. Thank you for the opportunity to just share a couple of things. I think I just wanted to share, and I'm happy to report that the Marloes children, OJM, and YZLH have all been released from the Tacoma Detention Facility. And I want to thank the tireless advocacy of our local nonprofits and the immigration attorneys and community members for advocating for their release. I also wanted to uplift and remind us that we're still demanding the return of EATB, originally from Colombia, EM, a 24-year-old man from Afghanistan, SF, an Iranian citizen living in Yamhill County, and now Mahdi Khan Babazadal, age 38, while he was driving his child to daycare. We cannot remain silent. To detain somebody in front of their child and other parents with their children will be hard to repair any sense of safety for our community and this is not what safety looks like. I also wanted to, just locally, while I was in Philadelphia, more information came out about the in custody death of 52-year-old Damon Lamar Johnson last month. As a social worker and Black woman, I am heartbroken over this loss of life of another unarmed, mentally ill, Black man. Mr. Johnson had struggles. He was a veteran and I hope that we continue to ask for answers out of our colleagues across the river for these types of deaths in custody. And my condolences go out to him and his family for this tragic loss. Yesterday, we all went on a tour of the Inverness Jail. So I just wanted to do a quick announcement for folks and the public to encourage people to apply for the Correctional Facilities Community Inspection Program to accompany us on an inspection in the fall. You can find this on the county website to get more information and apply. And there will also be an in-person informational session on Tuesday, August 5th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Midland Library. I had a couple of events, I'm sorry, one event. This Saturday, I will be teaming up with my former colleague and friend, Portland City Council President Pirtle Guinea, for a community conversation recapping city and county budget processes for District Two folks. This will be, you'll hear about what our goals were, our priorities, the shortfalls, and some next steps. We do have refreshments provided. It is Saturday, July 26th, from 10:00 a.m. The program starts at 10:30 and we will be at Rigler Elementary School. And then lastly, I want to appreciate the chair, you and your team, as well as the tag members for starting the work on the assessment work we're going to do for preschool for all. We know that this program has been critical for families and as I've stated, I want to explore some common sense options like indexing, but also ideas like the childcare tax credit that I proposed for those who may pay into the program but are not able to access it because they don't live in Multnomah County. I think it's really critical that we as a board interrogate this program and the tax to ensure that our process is impeachable, is unimpeachable as we do this process. I don't, people may disagree with us on the outcomes, but I want everybody to really feel good and be bought into the process. So I appreciate the opportunity to continue to give input and ensure that we're really getting the data and the information we need to make informed decisions about this absolutely critical program for our community. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Commissioner Moyer?
Yeah. I would like to thank everyone from Multnomah County who participated in Pride over the weekend. It was a lot of fun and I think it is really affirming when the LGBTQ community sees the visible support of the county, that this is a place that they belong, that we are proud to serve this community and that we are in partnership. And so I thank everybody. I thank the Health Department for its sponsorship of Pride. And I felt like it was a wonderful way for me to enjoy Pride with my colleagues. So I appreciate that and thank you, everybody who participated. I also would like to thank the Health Department for their responsiveness to my concerns that have come from constituents related to some health-related concerns of the chemical deterrence that are being used in a neighborhood with a school by ICE. Although we are significantly limited in what we can do, I do think as the local public health authority, getting as much accurate information to the public and being responsive to concerns is absolutely something we should do. So I wanted to thank the Health Department for being responsive and helping, you know, coordinate with our other state and local partners around doing some testing and information gathering and seeing what information we need to make public to people so that they understand the risks to themselves and others. And then, you know, I conclude by saying that I think as Commissioner Singleton mentioned, you know, we did a tour of Inverness Jail and, you know, that combined with going to the Justice Center has been quite an eye-opening experience. And I am pleased with what I believe is a real desire to better meet the behavioral health needs of individuals in custody. I have some really significant concerns about how evidence-based some of that is and frankly, the physical conditions and the harm that those physical conditions bring to individuals who have behavioral health issues. I also am a little bit in shock with what our seclusion policies are. They are incredibly punitive, even in terms of what other counties do. And I don't know if that's within our jurisdiction or that is purely under the sheriff, but I have some very significant concerns with the use and length of use of seclusion as a disciplinary technique. So I just put that out there. That is not a reflection on the effort of staff, which I was, you know, really impressed with and I appreciated their commitment to their work, but I do think that we need to have some conversations about our practices.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Johnson, anything for you this week?
Okay. I just have a couple of things. I did want to just say that is a sheriff's, under the sheriff's authority. It is, you know, we have board or budget authority over the sheriff's department and obviously responsibilities around some of the things, especially around corrections, health that happens. But I've always found the sheriff open to conversations about that. So I'd encourage you to that. This comes up around jails, but even other practices, you were talking about chemical deterrence, the use of chemical deterrence. There was a, we had a board conversation in 2020 about our ability as a board to, or our kind of lack of ability to actually dictate chemical deterrent policy for, that the sheriff office uses. So there's, you know, there's different things around the policy and most of that falls under the sheriff's jurisdiction. But I just appreciate you raising it up and everyone for attending the tour yesterday. I had two things that I wanted to talk about today. I just wanted to begin by recognizing, by talking a little bit about what's happening around the Central Library. So I wanted to begin by recognizing the range of concerns around possible changes to the Central Library's security policies. I also wanted to reassure our community and the board that library leadership, the COO's office, and my office are conducting a comprehensive review of potential changes to understand the full impacts of any changes on our patrons, on staff, as well as our duty to provide constitutionally protected, equitable, and inclusive library services. I want to commend the leadership of Library Director Annie Lewis and her team, as well as COO Chris Neal and his team for stepping into this space. They have truly built a culture of accountability, collaboration, and decisiveness. They're really models of what it means to walk the talk when it comes to improving safety and security of our community. I really trust the way that they are stewarding this process forward. Director Lewis has been sharing security plan updates to the board and will continue to do so. And I wanted to let the board know based on the, some of the requests from last week, that we're working to schedule a full briefing before the board next month. So that will be added to the snapshot soon. I also want to acknowledge that for Central Library staff, this increased scrutiny represents an extra challenge on top of an already very demanding job. I want to make sure that you know we see how committed you are to the mission of the library and we will maintain the integrity of that mission. For members of the community, please know that this review does not preclude safety improvements already implemented or underway, such as increased security officers and perimeter patrols which are in place, efforts to reduce loitering, and increased exterior cleaning and trash removal. All of that is happening. Multnomah County takes all safety concerns very seriously and is always striving for improvement. But the safety of staff, patrons, and neighbors of Central Library cannot be achieved through the library and county efforts alone. It requires meaningful collaboration and support from the city of Portland. The success of the library's safety, especially the area surrounding it, depends on law enforcement's response. I will say we have received mixed messages from the city and PPP about when to call 911. The mayor has indicated that all criminal behaviors in and around the library should receive a 911 call from library staff and that's what we're doing. And PPP has also indicated that their resource constraints make it difficult to prioritize responding for issues like public drug use. So we're trying to, you know, we need some clarity and clear guidance as well as a timely 911 response when a call is made, neither of which we're seeing happen on a regular basis. So, and I say this because, you know, we have done a lot of work at the county to increase resources for people who are experiencing addiction, including the deflection and sobering center and our investments in our behavioral health system. And we want to make sure that people have full access to that. We have some specific requests that the library has communicated from PPP and the city. We are requesting increased sworn officer presence outside of Central Library, including an officer posted on the exterior of Central during library hours to increase visibility and deter illegal behavior. We have requested walkthroughs of the Central Library on a daily basis, really to also help with relationship building between library staff as well. You know, if folks are concerned, and we've heard that folks are concerned about activity happening in the neighborhood and around Central Library. So we're encouraging the, conducting missions focused on Central Library and really increasing the resources for the police and provider joint connection program. These are the service providers who are partnering with PPP to do outreach on the exterior building and surrounding areas. And that, I think, is, will allow that conduit into some of the resources that we've built. That work has actually been cited as one of the actions that successfully addressed challenges to the exterior of the Behavioral Health Resource Center. So we want that to be mirrored. And then we want to make sure that there's higher utilization of the county resources available to law enforcement, such as sobering and deflection center. I will say, we all have the same goal and that is clear in the conversations and clear in the communications that I've received from different parties about this. People want our libraries to be safe spaces for all. We want increased safety downtown and throughout Multnomah County. Everybody agrees that that has to be a priority. We want to have the partnership with the city and it's really imperative that the city and PPP leaders follow through with action for an improved comprehensive safety plan for the heart of downtown Portland, including the Central Library. And the county is going to be a full and willing partner in that work. I know that my office, library leadership, the COO's office, is going to continue to show up and achieve shared goals. And I appreciate the board's interest in this and we will continue to have conversations around that. And Annie will continue to provide the updates. The last thing I wanted to mention was just a shout out to everybody who helped plan and participate in the Pride Festival this past weekend. It was an incredible showing. Special thanks to Rachel Banks and Valdez Bravo for their leadership. And I know that there were folks in the Health Department who really made sure that that happened. One, a couple of statistics I wanted to share about the work that we were able to do in the festival after the parade is that we were able to distribute 600 LGBTQ 2SI+ affirming books to the community. Our library staff did that with the tabling that they did at the festival. And our Health Department distributed over 600 lifesaving naloxone kits at the festival as well. So just really appreciate it and just want to give a huge shout out to our own county nurse practitioner, Nan, who did a great job DJing during the parade. That was incredible. So it is, it was amazing experience for everybody who participated. So thank you, everyone. That concludes today's regular board meeting. There being no further business. We are adjourned.